Yep.
So, good evening, everybody. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on Tuesday, May 23rd. Before we begin, some announcements. First of all, we have two postponements. The first one is item number three, which is for Chasmar Road for a final subdivision at that address. And the second one is number five. As for me and my house, also for a final subdivision at 27 Richmond Drive. I assume we've gotten an extension on that one, Tracy? As well as both of those needed extensions. I assume you guys got the extensions. Alrighty, so with that, we will start. And if you have no objection, Mr. Branyan, we will combine your two items, DMI with the site plan. So we will hear them both at the same time. And we will start with your item. And we're happy to talk at you and save you some time.
If you have questions, I'll be happy to. Just, I think Tatiana Moray, who's Executive Director of Greenwich Arts Council, and I believe they're President of the Board of Directors, Dorian Samuels may be on the...
Sure. Now, do you want everybody talking? Because I can actually just, we can cut to the chase for you and save you time. I'm not able to, I'm having trouble getting Tatiana into the meeting.
Go ahead and cut to the chase, whatever you would prefer.
Alright, so I don't know if you had a chance to catch up with Patrick. Well, what we've learned is that the current lease prohibits some leasing to for subleasing to for prof- Oh, let me just announce it. This is Town of Greenwich, 299 Greenwich Avenue, for a municipal improvement to renew the lease agreement with the Greenwich Arts Council, as well as the accompanying site plan for that lease agreement at 299 Greenwich Avenue to renew the lease agreement. So the current lease agreement prohibits subletting to for-profit organizations. And we understand, we were advised by, I believe, the applicant, that that in fact is occurring, and that it is happening, that it's being subleased to for-profit organizations. We don't know why that prohibition is in there, if it's against the town policy of the town. It's not a zoning issue. But what we would suggest, since we're aware that there's a lease violation, that you return through the system, since you have time, and just take that clause out, if that's what your lesssee would like to do, the sublesssee would like to do.
Which clause are you referring to, that it prohibits the, a for-profit?
It prohibits the property being leased to a for- Patrick, since you're there, do you have the reference? Or Mary? I don't have it open in front of me. Hold on, I can look for it. But in- Mary, do you have it?
Uh, I don't, I don't have it in front of me. I believe the issue that I tried to identify is I don't believe there is a prohibition in the lease agreement. But there was some question about the fact that for a period of time in the past, there have been leases with for-profit organizations.
No, in 2010, we put in the prohibition. So with the staff, let me just tell you where it is, Ben.
Okay, then I misread it, sorry.
So in 2010, apparently, a prohibition went into the lease that said that you can't lease to, I'm scrolling to it now. Sorry, I thought you guys had caught up. And so I wasn't ready. Okay. So the lease was revised to allow subletting by the Greenwich Arts Council to other groups in the in a decision letter dated October 15, 2010. And the commission noted, whereas such and such people yoga and dance classes are operated for profit, those are considered school uses that are not permitted in the CGBR. And the commission recommends that when any sublease is presented to the town for signature, all uses noted in the sublease conform to town zoning for the CGBR zone on Greenwich Avenue, and that the subleases be not-for-profit organizations. I don't know how we can get around the school issue, but we could figure that out. But this is apparently, so that was your approval in 2010 stated that it be resolved that the subleases be only for not-for-profit organizations, and that they fully conform to the zone. I think if we don't call them school uses, you would be alright. So what we would like to do is accommodate you in whatever way you need, but you'd have to cycle it back through the Board of Selectmen. So Patrick, how do we get around the school use?
Well, I think we need to make clear what we consider to be a school use is. And I'm not sure that-
They're having yoga classes, that's a fitness use, really. And the dance, the ballet, I think moved to Portchester. So I believe they're clear on that. Actually, the lady from the Arts Council will know. What was her name again?
Tatiana.
Tatiana, would you mind raising your hand? And we'll try to get you back into the meeting. Alright, here you go.
As she joins, I would just like to say, I think we've been relying on the Section 4 of both the current lease and the lease in front of you. And that talks about the use of the premise, where it talks about the, for general community purposes, primary and supportive of the arts. And as P&amp;Z staff shared with me, the MI decision from 2010, I could not find that language in the 2014 existing lease. So that was new information for us from the, whatever happened in 2010, the P&amp;Z MI approval. It did not appear that language was incorporated in the 2014 lease.
Which would make sense, because we probably had this exact same conversation. Sadly, nobody gave us new language from the 2014 lease. Is that possible, Patrick?
Well, if the renewal was not required in MI, or we approved the renewal as well, then we wouldn't have seen that.
So, no, but it sounds like, from what Ben's saying, like we took out the language.
I can't find your MI approval language incorporated into the lease document, where it prohibits the, for-profit organizations. The language, only thing we see is it says, "General Community Purposes Supporting of the Arts." And that catch-all provision allows the Arts Council to do-
And that's what, so nobody gave us what was in the 2014. Mary, do you want to add something?
No, I think I'm just, I'm seconding that in terms of, I did not see the language in the 2014 lease. I did not go back to the 2010 MI.
Alright, so that's here, that's where the problem is. The rest of us were looking at the 2010. And in 2014, apparently, the language changed. So Patrick, what do we do? Because I want to be helpful. I mean, what we decided yesterday is we'd like to be helpful to you.
Well, we have, we have the language in front of us and the decision from, well, the language of 2014. If there's any issues-
No, we don't have the language of 2014 in front of us. That's the problem. We only have the 2010 language, and it looks like the 2010 language was superseded in 2014.
Well, what I mean is, in 2014, we have the lease. Again, we don't have a decision.
They renewed, they renewed the lease in 2014. With, and we did it, and we approved it with apparently language that superseded what we had done in 2010. And that's not in our staff report. We don't have that.
Right. But I'm saying, we have it now, so we can, we can either sit and wait on the decision, or you have it in front of you now, if you want to incorporate it.
Don't have it. Don't, okay.
I'm sorry, I thought someone said that they're reading it right now.
Well, Ben was reading it. Do we rely on Ben? Like, do we think he's like an okay person? Alright, so in that case, Nick?
Yes.
Are you, okay. So Ben has language that we could put into our decision. And then he'd be okay. If he reads us that language, we could just go back and take his word for it, that that's what we did in 2014. I said this to the Board of Ed recently, Ben, as you know, I'm going to trust you on- That doesn't always go well. Okay, so. Is everybody okay with incorporating? I don't mean to poll you guys, but if we use the language from the 2014 MI approval, could we do that?
I think we can.
And that's Ben, that's what's in the 2014 MI that we don't have?
It's in the 2014 lease document. As far as I can tell, what occurred is the lease expired in 2010. They went month to month for a while. And then we had a new 10-year agreement that was approved in April of 2014. It expires in April of 2024. There was a gap between the 10 and the 14.
And did you do an MI?
I could not find any documentation on MI from 2014.
There you go. So where did that language you're reading come from?
From the existing lease, the 2014, 2024 lease.
But it didn't have an MI, and the MI that we approved in 2010 had different language. So now we're in a pickle again. How about this? You're not, you don't have to worry till, does anybody have a problem? If it doesn't, you don't have it submitted to the RTM anyway, right now. I checked, it's not on the June call. We got the summer to fix it. Are you okay with making sure we get everybody lined up? That we figure out why you signed a new lease in 2014 without doing an MI. We fix the language, and we make a new motion. We get everything ticky-talk, so it goes forward, alright? And then, and just come back to us once you're done with the BOS. Or even not the BOS, since they're okay with renting for profit. Whatever you want to do.
I'm happy to work with the Arts Council and with Land use staff. We can come back to the, to your commission.
So just tell us whenever you're ready. I mean, it'll be a quick thing. And we'll just get it right. So it sounds like somebody might have forgotten to give us the MI in 2014, assuming the 2010 one was good. Not surprising. And it wasn't consistent with the 2010 language. So we'll get it straightened out. We'll do a new, we'll do the new MI with the new language. But I would like to make sure we know what happened. Because I'm puzzled. You know, we like things tidy over here. When we can.
Absolutely. Happy to do that. We can come, I can work with Pat coming back.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Tatiana did, Ms. Moray, did you want to add anything? No, you're muted. Unmute, unmute.
Hello, it's nice to meet you all, and thank you for having me. I just wanted to add that, although it does say, I think it's, in the past, I took over as the Executive Director about five years ago, almost five years ago. So we've been kind of trying to keep up with all the rules and conditions of the lease. And so the for-profit that it relies to, it's mainly for the artists, musicians, and performers that come and rehearse, so by hours. So technically, they are individuals, but they're all with the artistic talent, as it's stated on our lease agreement. So we don't, it's not really for commercial use that is rented for the space.
And you did have somebody for commercial use, and the yoga studio is not there anymore?
The yoga studio is there, but it's mainly rented, same for performers, and right now is used for, it's called the Move in Arts Collaborative. So it's mainly compiled of seniors and adults. Come and they do yoga, but it's a different type. It's all in the artistic realm, so it's not really fitness classes that we have.
But ma'am, but they teach yoga to, if I wanted to take a yoga class, I could go there and take a yoga class, right?
Uh, no, not anymore. We used to have it.
Okay, alright.
But no longer. So we have a class on Sunday now, but it's also, again, for children's with disability. So it is, it's a yoga class, but it's not really for, take it, so yeah.
Mr. Wells, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just have a question. So we have a draft lease in front of us, which has the language that Ben just read, not prohibiting for profit. Why can't we approve that lease? And go on our merry way?
Well, in all honesty, because I don't know how we got from our 2010 MI to a 2014 lease that we never saw. And I wanted to try and find out what happened.
Okay.
That was the thing. Yeah, we could do that, and I'd be open to it if there was no time. But Mr. Branyan, on this occasion, has the blessing of time, which he rarely does. But it's just, I don't understand how this went through without, I'd like to know what happened in 2014. And then we'll know what we're superseding. Just trying to keep the Ts crossed.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So I don't want to make it difficult for you guys, so that's why, if that makes it difficult, we'll do what aren't suggest. But you're okay, right, Ben?
Yeah, I'll work on putting a timeline together to figure out what happened in that four-year gap.
Well, we now know that we have to look for the 2014. And the planner is actually listening. So the planner knows that since the 2010 MI, a lease was signed in 2014. And we'll try to track it down on our side and figure out how come it never came before us, or the RTM. Okay, are you guys good, Arts Council people? Yeah, okay. Alright. Alright, okay, so we'll see you when you come back? And just tell us when you want to come back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Funny how you expect one thing and then you get another, isn't it? Alrighty. So moving right along. Our next application is DNF Holdings LLC for a final subdivision to create three lots at 137 Doubling Road. On this application, we have some changes in who is seated. Because Mr. Levy is out. Ms. Jenkins is seated for him all night. And Mr. Baralek is out, so Mr. Lowe will be seating again on this application. So seated are Albin, McRae, Jenkins, Yaski, and Lowe. And do we have an applicant?
I am not seeing Mr. Hegney.
And this is Tom Hegney. He might have thought we'd do the MI for longer.
He thought wrong.
Alright, he's coming.
I was looking for Mr. Frangione as well. Maybe he, I don't see him as available. There we go. Madam Chair, since we're waiting for people to join, I'd just like to take this moment to note that the last item on our agenda, Dawn Harbor, the discussion item is postponed tonight.
Okay.
So if you're here for Dawn Harbor, we will not be discussing it.
Well, thank you. It's always nice to have the late-night thing go. Okay, good afternoon.
My pleasure, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon, Mr. Hegney. Thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. And I apologize with my tardiness. I did not anticipate how quickly the commission could move through its agenda items.
Well, it was only the MI, and we kind of postponed it, so.
So this is the 137 Doubling Road. Since our last meeting, we have provided septic fill for the two lots that had the so-called ledge letters. And Mr. Frangione, our engineer, who I, maybe up in Danbury and not able to join us.
They have Zoom in Danbury.
I, perhaps, I know Mr. Levy can drive and be on Zoom at the same time, but I don't think Mr. Frangione can do that. The, he was out there with the Health Department verifying that the correct fill had been placed on site. And I did send over to staff yesterday the approval letter for the septics for lots B and C.
Right, and A?
A already had one. A, the septic system was approved previously, yes. It was just these two with the ledge letter. Since we had the time to get that material on site and meet with the Health Department to verify it, we-
I mean, we got something, I know something came in on that today, and I can't find it, or what was it that came in today on this? Does anybody, yeah?
It was the ledge letters, the fill letters for B and C.
Okay, alright, I missed that.
It's actually septic approval.
Okey-dokey.
For those two lots.
Alright.
And I know there was a question about a small, what I see is a very small portion of Lot C, which joins the open space, and is part, there's an open space parcel there that we were looking to plant with significant evergreens, and we submit a planting plan on that. To adjust that lot line there really would require us to adjust all the lot lines for the lots, and we're, we thought that handling it through a landscape plan would be appropriate. It is at a more significant elevation, some 10 to 12 feet below where the pool is on Lot C. And it's not an area that would be utilized for recreation or any other purpose. It's a fairly steep slope there. It goes down toward the wall and then to the open space below. So we would ask that we not have to adjust those lot lines, since although it doesn't look like it's a big adjustment, it would become a significant adjustment.
Mr. Hegney, was the landscape plan in the package, I don't think I have it in front of me.
We submitted it in the previous,
Okay.
Part of the previous hearing.
Yeah, our staff comments-
I believe they were-
Yeah, our staff comments is, our staff comments are that we still don't have one. I didn't find it, and I probably missed it. You submitted it the previous, if it didn't get into the- So you don't want to align with the stone wall, which would protect the open space, because it's additional expense to you, to your client?
Well, it's, it's really going back and having to rework all of the lot lines in order to adjust, because this area is the accessway for Lot A. Because all of the lots are going to Doubling Road. But their legal access is off of Boulder Brook for A and C. It's B that has the ownership of the driveway running to Doubling. That's what we had gotten the variance for. And when you look at the contour lines from where the pool is down to where this area is that would be part of the open space, it's clear that it would not be a usable area by any means. It's at least 10 feet down.
And Mr. Hegney, the DPW, the engineering comments from 518 are a reset prior to approval. Have you, I didn't see a resolution of that. Did it, something come in that people have seen that it's been resolved?
I don't know. I know Mr. Frangione was reaching out to want to go over that with him.
I don't have Mr. Frangione, so-
And we don't have him.
Yeah, and you know how. Okay, well-
Two questions, real quick.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Hegney, so Conservation was talking about moving the line.
To a line with the wall.
So the wall would be the demarcation. The evergreen trees, could they be planted below the wall? So the wall really is part of, you know, it's the demarcation. It follows the, it follows the line approximately. I think actually, that was the impetus of everything, is just to make sure that there was some kind of a physical demarcation out there to show where the open space is. I'm not, I don't have the landscape plan in front of me, but if that's possible, that might be a good solution to-
That's a great idea, Nick. And so in the meantime, since it's, the DPW comments haven't been revised, Mr. McRae, we might as well just ask him to come back at the next meeting, when it's, because right now it's a reset prior to, reset prior to final.
I do have a question about the DPW comments.
Okey-doke, go ahead, Mr. McRae, and then Mr. Lowe.
Mr. Hegney may be able to answer. They were looking for an open area 10 feet to the either side of the center line of a drainage facility.
Standard, standard on them.
Yeah, standard's usually 10 feet, five to five. This 20 feet is like wacky to me. But I just want to, is that, that's the pipe-
The new language is, the new language has been 10 for a while, hasn't it, Patrick?
No, so.
It's 10 overall, is my recollection, not-
Alright, so they did it. Might be a typo.
Okay, so yeah, 10 overall, five and five to the center line of the pipe. Mr. Hegney, I guess this is the pipe. It's the pipe that connects the, I guess it's a farmer's drain from property to the north draining down through the property. Is that, I guess that's what they're looking for, because all of the other, all of the other utilities and drainage pipes are actually brand-new, and there's really nothing there that actually might have an obstruction.
True. Yeah, this is the pipe that drains from the people to the north. And it has, we've been having a number of conversations with those neighbors, and Mr. Frangione has scoped the pipe and so that they're not going to experience flooding, because they're over on Dingletown. And I, given where this drain pipe is, I don't see that it's an issue, whether it's five or 10 feet, frankly.
Okay, alright, so that's good. That's, so that's good. He's okay with it, Nick. Okay. Do you have a problem with that?
Yeah, because 10 feet on the other side of the pipe isn't his property anymore.
Well, that's true. That's, that's, that's a portion of the pipe runs along the property line.
Alright, so why don't you straighten that out with DPW, Mr. Hegney? I think that's what Mr. McRae was going to, and then it's Mr. Lowe.
Is it now, Mr. Lowe?
Yes, is it now, Mr. Lowe?
Good. I want to get back to a comment that Mr. Hegney made. And I, having to do with this, this stone wall, is this just an inconvenience? Are we talking about money and time constraints here? What really is at play here? You said, well, you'd have to redraw all the, I mean, how, what is the degree of resistance, I guess?
We'd end up with, when you're surveying lot lines, the extent that you can make them straight rather than curved, or at various angles, you want to do that. And that's why this 20-foot accessway is a straight line there. The wall is curved, and it's a very substantial stone wall. But there also is a great deal of topography there. And could we? Yes. But I don't, I don't see the utility or purpose in it when we can plant that area as, to protect that portion of the open space. I, the other thing I'd add is the accessways themselves, which are 40 feet wide, and some over 100 feet long, those are going to be de facto open space parcels as well, because we've already gotten the variance from the Board of Appeals to not use those as our driveways to Boulder Brook. All the driveways will utilize the existing driveway on Doubling Road.
Well, in response to your comment about, you know, I think, I think what Conservation was saying, you said you don't see the, I'm not to put words in your mouth, not, you don't see the point of it, but something to that nature. Conservation is referring to the natural boundary of the stone wall, to the extent that it is a significant stone wall. I, you know, what do I know? But I try to pay attention to the advice of these departments, and I would like to support them. So if this isn't just a kind of a, you know, well, I don't want to spend the money- well, I don't want to spend the money or the time right now. We want to get this done kind of thing. I, I'm just looking for a more compelling argument against it without, without stretching out, you know, this meeting.
There you go. My compelling argument, I don't think it makes any sense. And if, if you're going to lay out lot lines, you would do them in the fashion that we have posed. If there's a concern about this particular area, which is isolated and at an elevation below where anyone is going to walk or utilize, we can plant it with evergreens and make sure that it will remain in undisturbed state.
If everybody else is comfortable with it, fine. I just, it, I, I don't like to see us just glossing over when we get some, somebody who spent time, who understands these issues better than I, and, and they weigh in on it. I, I'm uncomfortable just dismissing it at the leisure of an applicant.
Perhaps, Mr. Low, why don't I speak with the staff at Conservation and go over with them? And explain where we have and what we're doing. And I, I suspect that then they will say this is fine.
Okay, that would be ducky. That would be ducky, Mr. MacRae. Oh, you haven't finished. I'm sorry. I was just, you know, I have had instructions to move us along.
No, I didn't know you had those instructions. I thought it was more of a suggestion.
All right, Mr. Low, you go ahead.
Another question, I don't, I don't know whether you address this, but there was a request to remove all these invasive species at the edge of the open space. Did you, we cover that?
Conservation is going to make them do it regardless.
Yes, that, that's, that's fine. No, that, that's certainly acceptable.
Okay.
I thought we had addressed that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, the thing is, Mr. Hagney, we don't seem to have your plan, or I think Nick finally found it, but the rest of us didn't. Madam Jenkins. You're muted. You're muted. Mary?
I'm being, I'm being so brilliant and I missed it. I was going to ask about the remediation for invasive species too, but there was also a public comment about potential traffic issues on construct, during construction, and I didn't know whether that had ever been addressed.
Nah, go ahead.
There was a letter by Capana LLC saying that there was already difficulty with passing traffic on, and I don't have it in front of me, I don't know if it was Dublin Road or one of the roads leading to it. And there was concern about heavy construction traffic making that even more impassable. And I never saw that addressed.
I, I thought we had addressed that at the last meeting. This is regarding the 57-acre parcel that's across the street from us with the four driveways on Dublin Road. And we said that there would be no vehicles parked or standing on Dublin Road. This site is, is very easy to utilize parking and staging onsite. It's a plateau that's very level where the three houses are going to go. And we will not have any activity other than to connect to the water line, which would be so, at some point when the, when you have to tie into the main in Dublin Road, that, that we would have proper police presence there. And that's, that's the only time we would need to have any activity on the road itself. And I would add that we have addressed the issue that DPW had regarding the removal of any impediment for the sightlines. That work has been done. So the sightlines are as, as represented in the the site plan that Mr. Frangione prepared.
Okay. Okay. All right. And Nick, you're satisfied at this point? We could turn to public comment?
Yeah, we can go.
Okey dokey. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? This application is 137 Dublin Road. And Kelly O'Donnell. A memoir, oh, wait till the person is in.
This might be Attorney O'Donnell, Madam Chair.
Oh.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, hello, hello, Attorney O'Donnell. If you would go ahead.
Sure, sure. We would just like to emphasize the concerns about the traffic there on Dublin Road. And so to the extent that the commission has any ability to require that nothing be parked or that notice be provided to the neighbors.
We'll do that.
When the water is, the water mains being tied in just so that neighbors can route around as necessary.
Well, I, as we were discussing, and I was thinking that our approval could state that during construction, all vehicles are to be kept on site during the construction process, except for anything as necessary for the tie-in of the line.
Sure. And if we know when the tie-in is happening, then it would make it much easier to route around.
Okay, we could ask for that, but it'll be hard to enforce. So, but the neighbors will know you, we've asked for it. So, so the tie-in of the line and onsite construction, okay, for the vehicles. And then with the invasives, we got, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have standard language with other site plans that we put in about you know, not closing the road without proper approvals, you know, whether that needs to be highway or police or whatever. So we can, we can include that in this as well.
In the subdivision. I mean, it's normally, it's a site division, a site plan. That's what I was sort of, but we could say the commission notes in approving the subdivision, bloody blah, right?
Right.
Okay.
And if we're requiring a review before permit, we can also make sure that that detail is in there.
And if somebody reads our transcript, they'll know the technical reference to a bloody blah. Mr. Hagney, is there anything else?
No, we'll continue to work with engineering on their comments and hopefully get a, a report from them that has the magic words in it.
Great. Thank you for magic words. Thank you very much, Mr. Hagney. You do not have the next one, as I remember.
I do.
Oh, you do? Okay, you can stay then. All right.
Actually, I did have the next one, but I took that off the agenda.
Oh, okay. It's 27 Richmond. Yeah, you don't have 180, right?
I do.
Oh, you do? You have that one too. That's the next one. All right.
I know you're trying to move these meetings along and I hope to assist you in that task.
Well, thank you very much for that. So our next application is number six. And that is because number five was postponed. The estate of Eileen G. Clancy, executor Douglas J. Wells and Eileen G. Clancy trustee for Final Coastal Subdivision at 180 Byram Shore Road. Seated on this application are Albin, MacRae, Jenkins, Low and Yeski. Mr. Hagney, from what I understand, all the outstanding issues on this application have been addressed at this point.
That is correct, Madam Chair, and we would ask for your approval.
Does the commission have any questions of Mr. Hagney?
No.
Does anybody from the public wish to speak about 180 Byram Shore Road? 180 Byram Shore Road, Final Coastal Subdivision. Nobody from the public wishes to speak? Does anybody object on the commission to closing this application at this time?
No.
Hearing no objection, this application is hereby closed. We would entertain a motion from Monsieur Secretary.
Okay. This is 180 Byram Shore Road, application PLPZ 2023 050, Final Coastal Subdivision. The applicant is requesting a lot line revision between lot number one and two per section 629 and 628, the kind of subdivision renovations in section 69, 6111 and 6205 of the Greenwich BZR. The commission finds per section 205 of the BZR, the zoning lot of lot number two is not conforming with the minimum lot area requirements. And that the applicant has received a variance of lot area from the zoning board of appeals dated 10/5/10/23 under PLPZE 2023-016 zoning issued comments. 5223 indicating proposal meets requirements of the BZR subject to variance approval. Seward issued comments 5323 requesting applicant submit a signed letter of knowledge receipt of their P and Z comments. Engineering issued comments on 5323 indicating approval of subdivision with comments. Well, in addition to permit needs questionnaire on 11422 indicating no action required. Therefore, motion to approve the application under the following, pursuant division comment, the application, applicant has submitted an acknowledgement letter dated 5/8/23. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or environmental issues.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Mr. Low has seconded. Ms. Jenkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Yeski?
Aye.
Mr. MacRae?
Aye.
Low?
Aye.
Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing, and we go to restaurant hour. Our next application is Antoine Blech. This I do know you have, Mr. Hagney. Antoine Blech for Oriente for a final site plan for a proposed outdoor dining seats for 20 seats at 55 Lewis Street. Mr. Hagney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When this was on the agenda last time, we postponed it because the commission hadn't had the opportunity to review the back history of this regarding a prior restaurant, which was Penang Grill.
And the step.
Back in 2002, there was a stipulation limiting the number of seats in, during the day to 12 and at night to 41. And so that modifies what had been previously submitted by the, the restaurant. The question that came up yesterday briefing was, how many seats do you get outside during the day? The maximum would be 12 if all the seats are removed inside. If they want to have six outside and six inside, they could do that. But they can only have a total of 12 seats available during the day. From 6:00 PM on till closing, they can have the 41 seats. And what we're proposing was to have 20 outside and 21 inside.
With the, yeah, go ahead.
Parking provided at 87 Greenwich Avenue, which is another property that's owned by the Sutton family.
And you would be able to provide us a copy of that agreement as?
Yes, yes. I, I will submit that to staff tomorrow.
All right.
There was a question about garbage. What I'm seeing with a lot of the restaurants now, rather than using the, the two-yard dumpsters or something of that size, they're using the plastic rolling refuse containers. And they bring those out either at night or first thing in the morning. When I'm coming to the office about seven o'clock in the morning, I do see Finocchio Brothers there picking up the refuse. And so that's handled in that fashion. And the, and deliveries are usually in the morning for food and beverages.
Where does the delivery, Mr. MacRae's concern yesterday at the, at the briefing was where does the delivery truck go? Because in the, in the regular season, in the winter, they go in the alley.
They just pull up in front. Because you don't, you don't have the parking act utilized at that point.
And the, and the garbage containers are enclosed, right? They're closed. Okay. Any other questions from the commission on this application?
Mr. Hagney, I have a picture in front of me showing a lot more chairs and tables in the alley set up already.
In fact, you have tables set up and they don't have an approval yet. What you could, you could go there and Mr. LaRoe could share the picture if he wanted to.
No, although I didn't have lunch today, I did take a walk during the lunch hour and I did see, in fact, there were people sitting at tables both here and Little Penguin. And I've spoken to both owners and said that was not permitted. And they said if we're not approved this evening, they would remove them from use until the approval is granted by the commission. And they want to pass on my, their apologies.
The stipulation says 115 Mason Street is the off-site. And now it's changing to 87 Greenwich Avenue. So it seems that the stipulation needs to be revised to reflect that. Also, it's my understanding that the.
Hold on, just stop just a second. Let's just quickly discuss that. I believe that with the applicant's concurrence, we could modify it in our decision. But I want to check that with, with staff. That our decision would can modify the language in the stip to change the address. Is that correct, Mr. Hagney and staff?
I would agree. I would, I would think that as long as the location is comparable to what was the original step, then changing the location is something that we can agree to.
Our decision would have to make a finding that this has been proposed as an alternate location to what is in the stipulation.
Okay, let's talk about the alternate location before we get any too far deep in this. Perfect. Because it's my understanding that it's a gated parking lot with reserved spaces in it. My concern is, and there's a lot of moving parts here, is that we're going to have dining seats in an alleyway that need to be, that can be only erected or installed after 6:00 PM. Because it limited to 12 seats, the stipulation says that they can have more seats, but only after 6:00 PM. So technically those seats in the alleyway, alleyway have to be taken down. After 6:00 PM, this off-site parking needs to be available and it may not be as available as we think it is with this gate. The 115 Mason Street, I don't believe had a gate. So in my, as I'm seeing this, there's a lot of moving parts to this alleyway, other than just putting out, you know, approval and of chairs and tables. And I really, I'm not too sure if I want to move this fast to go through this without really clearly understanding. Yes, somebody's going to run down and open that gate all night long at 6:00, that the tables move in and out because of the stipulation. Or does the stipulation get revised to reflect something different? Because it clearly states, it clearly states 6:00 PM is when, you know, the stipulation opens up this and adds more seating that's available for the restaurant.
If I could reply, Madam Chair.
Yes, sure. Yes, Mr. Hagney.
So I, I did speak with Mr. Sutton. What they would do, the, the gate started because the post office is right behind the, the parking area. And the public was not aware that there was a distinction between the public parking and the private parking. And when the prior parking director removed the 15-minute parking spaces in front of the post office, that became a real issue. And for a time, Mr. Sutton had a security guard there trying to instruct people that it was private parking. And he assessed, the necessity was he had to put in a gate so that during the day, when the post office is open, that people aren't using his lot for access, for parking for the post office. That's not a problem at 6:00 PM and the gate can be left open and.
Who leaves the gate?
Be available.
Is there somebody at Little Penguin?
That would be Mr. Sutton's staff who would leave it open after 6:00.
Easy thing, Mr. MacRae, conditioned in the approval. And I happen to know that there's a commission member who hangs around downtown fairly often around dinnertime. And we will assign that commission member to make sure that that darn gate is open.
He's a volunteer.
Doesn't matter.
I thought it was you, Peter. I thought she's talking about you.
So let's just put that, we're going to put that condition, we're going to save staff the trouble and we're going to make sure that someone notices whether or not that gate is open. Because that's the easiest thing to do.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate the commission members taking active role, but also this is the, the property owner involved with all of this is the same. So there is, there is continuity here. So I just want to.
Yeah, no, it's just a question if somebody says, oh yeah, they can park in that lot, but the gate's closed, so nobody can get in, been there, done that. So let's just, you know, anybody who sees it, I assume that. I assume that Jody will have a chance at some point to just walk by in the evening. Or somebody from Z E O staff and can just look as we did last summer where we did a cruise, somebody did a cruise in the early days of COVID and just looked at all the outdoor restaurants at the same time. Think that was Shanice, actually.
Mr. Hegney, what was the parking count again? Are there the seating count? How many outside?
The seating count is is twenty and twenty-one after six and twelve, however they want to divide it before six.
Twenty outside, twenty-one inside?
Yeah, something like that up to them, but not to exceed forty-one after six P M. And not to exceed twelve before six P M.
Correct.
Can I say something here?
Yes, please.
I I know we haven't gotten to the next application, but.
No, let's not. So don't do that. If you want to talk about Penguin, you got to wait. Unless you're only talking about about this one.
Okay, I'll then I'll just make the observation that.
They have a neighbor.
If if it's accurate, though, although Oriente may be limited to only twelve seats for lunch. And and then has to is required to clean up this alleyway. Somebody else who may have access to this alleyway does not have to clean up, you know, does not have to remove chairs and tables, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So just an observation.
Well, I I would, Mr. Low, I would just add that that's yet to be determined. So.
Well, that's why I wasn't allowed to talk about any other application.
Right. Well, I I think, you know, I.
Mom is really mean.
These are these are site plan applications that need to stand alone, narrow, and however, when you have shared resources, you know, that there is, there is.
You have shared narrow lanes. Yes, we stay in them. Right.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have narrow lanes. All right. Do I have any comments from the public on the application of Oriente at fifty-five Lewis to have outdoor dining? Yes, Jackie Kaufman. Yes, Madam Kaufman.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Jackie Kaufman. I represent M H Four Realty LLC, which is the owner of eight and ten Lewis Street across the street. I'm going to agree with Mr. McRae's suggestion that this matter be continued for further consideration regarding the stipulated judgment items, the item number four and item number five specifically within the step reference that in order to for the stipulation to remain in full force and effect that proof of an ongoing lease renewal is provided or has been provided and that has not yet been provided. And staff had confirmed earlier that there's been gaps in the consistency of item number four. And further under item number five, signage is required onsite and also at the companion parking street lot, and there has been no signage application either for wayfinding signage or for larger signage and compliance with that as well as part of this application. Certainly, the continuity of the ownership is a comforting factor to the commission and also to to my client. However, the stipulation will survive the ownership of the building. So anything you do now and the modification of that stipulation will be ongoing for future participants, property owners that may not have that same continuity. So I think that's an important consideration for you to make here. And.
Well, Ms. Kaufman, if if we condition the approval on being provided the proof of the parking agreement, the approval would not be valid if they don't meet the condition and therefore they would have to return to us.
Oh, no, certainly. I just think that it's also should be a consideration that since it had not been provided previously, does that?
Does that void the stip?
Yes.
We will let Mr. Hegney respond to you on that. We will let Mr. Hegney respond to you on that. Anything else?
No, at this moment, no, we just want to ensure that the stipulation is maintained that all of the conditions of approval are both enforceable and managed otherwise. Not a reliable. Given that the 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 issues between these property owners that largely circulated around parking historically, it's important that all parking and stipulated conditions are maintained.
Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am. All righty, Mr. Hegney, would you like to reply to that?
Certainly, as we were discussing earlier, the the stipulation can be modified by the the commission to provide for alternate parking. In fact, this is now owned by the same owner of the property. So it's actually more conforming than what the stipulation provided. And the parking area is, I think, more convenient than what is at one fifteen Mason Street.
And we also have no evidence that your parking agreement lapsed. Ms. Kaufman had indicated that there was a lapse in the in the compliance, the lapse in the compliance was us not having.
Was not filing the affidavit.
Was not filing it with us. However, we have no evidence. Ms. Kaufman believed that there had been a lapse in any agreement. So if you would give us both of you know, the expiration as well as the renewal that would help address that. And I think.
Certainly.
Okay, any other, any other comments from the public? I think not. Any other comments from the commission? All right. So given the comments you've heard, does anybody object to closing this application at this time? Please advise.
I do.
All righty. Well, as you know, if one person doesn't want to close, we don't close. Mr. McRae, would you like to elaborate on why you have an objection?
I believe that there are way too many moving parts to this and this, what would seem a simple outdoor dining consideration is a lot more complicated than what we're seeing at face value. And that the stipulation as it states, as it stands and signed has specific limitations to it that are we are changing as opposed to the parties that need to agree to it. And I I'm kind of uncomfortable modifying a stipulation through a motion by the commission than having having everybody actually agree to it.
Okay.
If I could address that, Madam Chair. The the only parties to the stipulation are the the restaurant owner, which the town attorney's office had said was was no issue substituting the new owner versus the prior owner, which was Penang Grill. And the property owner and the commission. So all of the necessary parties are in fact here. And I I don't see where there is an impediment for all the parties to with without the necessity of seeking court assistance to amend an agreement, which is what a stipulation is.
I understand. It's it's me being uncomfortable with that situation and understanding. I I would, I personally would like to have counsel opine on this. But that's that's where I'm coming from.
The only thing I would say to you on this is that this is a short term use. And that this weekend is Memorial Day weekend and that this is outdoor dining that only is going to go until the fall. That this is an important weekend for the restaurants. I recognize that they've not behaved completely appropriately, but we fixing all that. And if I could convince you to agree to this, we can, we will consult with John with our counsel to make sure we've got all everything buttoned down. I think he might have been in court today because I did try to reach him earlier, but could I convince you to go ahead with this with all the conditions we've discussed? Since it's only for a temporary till a use for the, you know, so we can allow them to go open for the until, you know, now.
I think that's one of the other things are they are open. I'm looking at the picture now.
But they won't be. They've already offered you, and I know that's bothering you and those things do bother me. But at this point, they've offered to take down the tables and bring them in. But it's Memorial Day weekend. This is a big weekend for for the restaurants. And so it's that choice. If we can fix all this, could we let them go forward with everything fixed and healed? Would you be amenable to reconsidering?
I think the one thing I would reconsider is that actually that the tables be removed. It was because we have not, we've not provided this. They've got a lot of things they need to to do. And it would just seem that actually.
We can't, we can't let them stay outside in violation of our regulations without an approval.
So I think if we want to go ahead with this.
That's why I'm saying if you would be willing to go ahead.
They take the tables out.
If if you don't, if we don't go ahead, they have to take the tables out. Because we can't sit here and violate our own regulations. That's forbidden. So that's why I'm saying, can we try to accommodate these people?
Okay, so if we go, we go through with this. Technically, until they actually secure all of the necessary parts of six one hundred, they really need to take the tables out. Am I correct?
No, as soon as we've approved it. Well, as soon as we've approved it, it's effective. The approval is if, oh, do we have to have the parking for eighty-seven, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all the necessary interdepartmental conditions per six one hundred.
Mr. Hegney.
Talking before.
So they're going to have to, you quick as, quick as you can, get everything satisfied because today's Tuesday. Mr. McRae will give you to, you know, all you've got to do is get everything done so that you we know you, we have the agreement. And that's really all you need. The only moving part you have right now is the agreement. The parking agreement. That's really the only thing you're missing. Do you have anything else, Nick?
Not at this moment, no.
Okay, so if if Mr. Hegney gallops over the agreement tomorrow morning, you're all, they're all set and they don't have to remove their tables. Something goes wrong, you can remind us of it until November. Mr. McRae?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Every day.
And every day, absolutely. And in the meantime, we'll try to facilitate them going forward. And Mr. Hegney, again, I keep saying this to people, it's a big trust here. And if you would tell, if you would tell Mr. Black that they really need to watch their Ps and Qs because the commission is bending over backwards to help them out. And they really need to stop with the nonsense. And if you want, I'll tell them. I'm really good at saying that to people. All right, okay.
I will advise them of that. They they, I'm sure appreciate your consideration and thoughtfulness on it.
All right, it's not that. It's that the P O C D asks us to make sure that we maintain the vitality of our business sectors and our restaurants come to develop it. Up that I've got two people with their hands raised, Patrick, but I don't think it's to this application because I've asked for a public comment twice. So I'm not going to call on them. So therefore, having grudgingly gotten Mr. McRae's acknowledgement, does anyone else object to closing this application? Because in that case, we're cooked here. Now, okay, this application is hereby closed. Mr. Secretary, could I impose on you for a motion?
Okay.
At least it's not like the person whose cell phone kept going.
I could do that if you'd like, but okay, fifty-five Lewis Street application, P L P Z twenty twenty-three one four two. Applicant is requesting approval outdoor dining seats with an existing driveway and a three thousand three hundred thirty ninety-seven square foot property in the C G B zone. The commission finds that per stipulated settlement dated January sixteenth, two thousand and three, the establishment shall be permitted to increase restaurant seating at the premises from twelve to forty-one seats for dinner patrons starting at six P M. At all other times, the seating shall be limited to twelve seats and all additional seats shall be removed. The applicant is to secure a total of seventeen offsite parking spaces for the patrons of the establishment, which spaces are to be located at one fifteen Mason Street. The sixteen offsite.
No, no, eighty-seven.
That's what this is what the stipulated settlement says.
Okay, sorry.
Sixteen offsite parking spaces shall be made available to the patrons of the establishment from six to eleven P M. Daily and the correspondence dated one eighteen eighteen from the town law department conditions of the stipulated settlements can carry over with the new restaurant tenants. Therefore, motion to approve the site plan noting the following. Prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall provide or secure verification or full compliance with the seating as stated in the stipulation. Current parking agreements for the property owner of the eighty-seven Greenwich Avenue parking lot. All necessary planning and zoning commission requirements per section six one hundred of the B Z R. All necessary interdepartmental conditions per section six one hundred of the B Z R. The applicant is limited to twenty seats within the existing parking drive, parking driveway only after six P M. The applicant shall provide signage to the offsite parking location. And that shall be provided to the patrons. Per the stipulation, twenty-nine seats must be removed until six P M. Daily. The applicant is requesting seating from April first to November twentieth. And the hours operation for the outdoor dining are Sunday, six P M. To ten P M. Monday through Thursday, nine P M. To nine thirty and Friday and Saturdays from six to ten thirty P M.
Okay. Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lowe has seconded. Ms. Jenkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Lowe, thank you though, Mr. McRae. Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye and with that, the motion passes four one. Thank you very much for that, Mr. McRae. Okay, the next one. Application number eight, Penguin Holding, Le Penguin, for a final site plan for proposed outdoor dining for up to twenty-four seats at sixty-one Lewis. Mr. Hegney.
Yes, Madam Chair, we submitted a revised plan that showed twelve seats outside. The owner of the restaurant was under the impression that the four seats out on the sidewalk in front were permitted as additional seating when this was reviewed administratively by the staff in two thousand and nineteen.
No, so what, oh, okay, go, got it.
I just want to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, got it.
That the the memorandum from the your staff said that it would that the number of seats, the maximum number of seats would not increase. So what we're, we would propose to do is we were showing eight seats being removed from the inside and having eight seats outside. We would propose to remove twelve seats on the inside and have the twelve seats, including the the four seats in the front of the restaurant for the outdoor dining. I I did speak with the owners of this restaurant as well. They also use Finocchio and have the garbage picked up around seven o'clock in the morning and that's done six days a week. And they do get deliveries and deliveries are either on the side through the gate on the town parking lot or right in the front on on Lewis Street itself. And those are usually made also in the morning, not not as early as the the refuse haulers. But they are made early as well.
Mr. LaRoe has a comment. Mr. LaRoe, would you go ahead?
Mr. Hegney, the four seats outside, those those are, why are those being counted separately, I guess?
I I, my client was under the impression that the administrative sign off in two thousand and nineteen added those seats as extra seating on the property. And I went over the memo from July first, two thousand and nineteen with him and explained that that is not what it says. And that if we, and if we do want, if he does want to obtain additional seating that health department's willing to approve, but that this commission cannot because it's in the C G B zone and doesn't have additional parking. So either he would have to obtain additional parking and come back to the commission with a subsequent application. Uh, he is limited uh to the uh, to the seating uh that historically has been there, which is the forty nine. And so we would ask to amend the uh plan that we had submitted uh, prior to the last, or just after the last meeting, which showed eight seats removed inside. Uh, and this would require twelve seats to be removed inside as part of having the, the twelve outside, including these four in the front.
Okay, I, I may have misheard. I, I, I thought I heard eight and then four being also outside, but you were saying eight plus four is twelve, and that's the total number.
And, and that's the number that would be removed from the inside while they have the outdoor dining.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
All right, um, commissioners, do you have any questions, Nick? And then Mary.
Awful lot of, uh, awful lot of uh seats that are out there now, again. Out there, I am really concerned. There's every time I guess, I say, oh, I just put them out there. Well, you don't have an approval to put them out there, so. So I have four, Mr. Hagney, just to confirm, in the front, at the front door, and eight seats in the driveway.
That's correct, and I have explained that to the restaurant owner, uh, and they will abide by the commission's decision.
Okay, and I guess we got the, right, we got some additional information. I guess Health Department is okay with how they trash uh, gets picked up on a daily basis. So I guess we're good with that, and that was a concern of mine.
I, 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 I don't, it seems like the, the, the two and three yard dumpsters that were used in the past have sort of fallen out of favor, and they're using these plastic roll-offs. Roll, roll, rolling uh refuse containers now.
Yeah, and you know, the question we're not asking about that shift, and I think we need to refer it to the Health Department, is you know, Mr. Hagney. New York City has had, and we've heard anecdotally from elsewhere, an increase in, what do you call them? Rodents? And other pests.
Vermin.
Man, vermin, vermin's the word I was looking for. And just the concern about whether the shift makes it any worse. Because in New York City, I just sent everybody an article that New York City has shifted their outdoor dining and reduced the hours because of this problem. Because they've seen an increase, and they actually hired, as you know. They didn't call it a vermin czar, I think he's a rat czar. Ms. Jenkins?
Uh, yes, I have two quick questions. We have a photograph, I believe, today, which seems to indicate that the two tables on the sidewalk are for three each. Which exceeds the four seats on the sidewalk that were agreed to. Um, and my second point would be, I was a little concerned because it appears that the certificate of liability insurance is going to expire before the November end date for outdoor dining. And I would just like some sort of, I guess, may, maybe a conditional comfort that the approval only extends as long as there is liability insurance in place that may be covered already by six one hundred. But um, and I just noted that it expires before November twentieth end date. Those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Hagney, would you reply to Ms. Jenkins?
Yes, I, I did uh speak with the owner about that. Uh, the workers' comp policy had expired. Uh, and we submitted a revised uh uh, certificate of insurance showing that it was good for another year uh from uh May of, May sixth May six twenty four. And uh the, since the current policy is in effect, they couldn't give us a new certificate of insurance saying that it was going to be longer than that. And that they will provide for that renewal and will, I'll, I'll diary that in to make sure that that gets sent to the staff to show that that uh insurance is still in place.
Okay. And the six, six seats are, I'm sorry, the six seats are for Mr. Hagney?
No, that this, the, the, it, the only four seats would be permitted there uh as part of this approval.
Okay, the, the photograph seems to indicate more currently.
I, I will press upon my client to make sure that the uh, the conditions that are approved by the commission are met.
Thank you, Mr. Hagney.
Yes, I think you will have to speak with Mr. McRae afterwards. Does anybody on the commission have any other questions? Okay, we have a member of the public with their hand raised. I'm hoping it's for this application. This is, uh, members of the public, if you wish to comment on Penguin. Uh, please raise your virtual hand. And we have uh somebody named Jen. I am promoting you now, and members of the public, two minutes. All right, gonna try that again. Okay. Nope. Um, okay. All right, um, Jen, do you wish to speak on Penguin, on Penguin? Please speak. You're muted right now. Do you wish to speak? Go ahead. Your hand is down. Does, I guess that does, it means you don't want to speak. All right. Um, I'm gonna remove you from the meeting then. Um, and the next person is Jackie Kaufman. And Ms. Kaufman. If you would go ahead. No, she's an attorney, so you gotta stop the clock. All right, anybody wishing to comment on Penguin Restaurant, please raise your virtual hand. Um, I've seen some hands go up and down. Ms. Kaufman, if you would go ahead.
Good evening. Uh, thank you very much. My name is Jackie Kaufman with Carmody, where I stand back in Hennessey, representing M H Home, the policy owner of eight and ten Lewis Street, which is across the street. Uh, I appreciate the clarification that Attorney Hagney put into the record for you tonight. Uh, certainly, it was troubling that the application had previously and then continuously violated section two A of the outdoor dining section, which I think is uh, since it's been resolved. But uh, unlike the, I, I think what's distinguishing here is the tenant is at this owner is operating a violation, whereas we had the adjacent owner, which had an ongoing uh stipulated agreement to the number of seats here, that very much so in the first paragraph of your regulations, it speaks to people who operate in violation during the season uh for outdoor dining. Um, and I think that's very critical here uh to consider for, for this applicant, and of, of course, others as well. But uh, it, it is difficult to enforce uh every single restaurant and every single umbrella that's up. Umbrellas were not asked for in this application. I haven't seen any revisions to that. So you have these very nuanced uh, part of your uh regulations that were very thoughtfully uh drafted, and uh yet we have, you know, an, an ongoing need to, to ensure that our restaurants are are healthy and vibrant, and I think that you're doing your best to balance, to balance all those issues. But here, we, we clearly have uh an actor that hasn't, hasn't been trusted, it can't be trusted. In the application itself, there are two things that I, uh, would concern me that it should, should not be closed tonight. Number one is that the zoning enforcement officer hasn't issued um any additional comments that I saw, uh, at least earlier today. Uh, that it was acceptable to move forward. It was blank in the staff report. And secondly, that uh, the there is a question, open-ended question in the staff report as to the parking and how it's been historically satisfied for this site. The applicant hasn't responded to that to date. Um, I haven't heard from that from um Mr. Hagney as well. Uh, we're certainly interested in that under the regulations with the number of seats that they have, and they're not increasing, so they are following that regulation, but I, I, I don't have any any answers to that, and neither, neither does uh the staff report. Yeah, it has not also been reflected in the staff report, I should say. I think that it would be a missed opportunity to not have that result. As part of the site plan application, as you know, in this, right, in this zone, restaurant uses are special permit uses. So there is a heightened level of scrutiny. Um, um, so I would ask that you please address that. People are making a decision on this, and until then, and until we know that, we oppose to the granting of the staff for dining.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Kaufman. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hagney, would you address that, please? And also, uh, yes, go ahead, and then I'll ask you the next question.
Uh, this restaurant is uh, has been there for many years uh and is grandfathered in terms of the seating and not requiring parking. Uh, that's the uh that distinguishes it from what had been Penang Grill and is now Orietta. This is grandfathered. I think the, I think staff brought that up at the briefing yesterday.
And um, Mr. Hagney, um, staff did mention that your, one of your insurance certificates um is expired. So we would expect you not to operate, even though you've got tables out there, until you have submitted proof of the insurance.
Well, that, that we did submit, uh, showing that it was the workers' comp policy.
Yes, it was.
That had expired earlier this month, and uh, I did forward that, but my client provided that, and I forwarded that to staff uh, yesterday.
Okay, so they do have, because they didn't yesterday afternoon. Okay, um, any other comments from the commission on this?
Just, uh, uh, what are we gonna be doing about the existing conditions? The tables and everything are out there.
Well, the tables are out there. If they have an approval tonight, the tables can stay out there, but they now have to comply with the seating number. I'm gonna do this right.
Well, yeah, looks like, it looks like there's a lot more than four and eight. It looks like there's more than twelve in the driveway. Um, and I would strongly recommend that actually that if we do anything on this, that that, that's be part of it, that they have to remove those until they get the approvals, because there is compliance with section six one hundred. And if they don't have all the bits and pieces, then I don't see how staff actually uh gives them the zoning permit. So they were actually operating without a zoning permit.
That's, as was Orietta.
Exactly. Aren't they sharing that, that driveway?
They're sharing the driveway, yes.
So that, that might uh lead one to believe that there are more tables dedicated to one restaurant.
No, because if you look at the photo.
Yeah, look at the photo, it's great.
Photo, the seats are lined up, the tables are lined up against either wall, so the, and they always did that. So the Orietta restaurants are up by Orietta, and the Penguin restaurants are up by Penguin. They're, they, they there's an aisle down the middle, and it's very clear which restaurant is which, because otherwise the waiters wouldn't know who to wait on, right?
Well, it's actually even worse than that, because actually the Orietta's uh got uh red umbrellas, and Penguin's got blue umbrellas.
Oh, shoot, we forgot about the umbrellas. Are we allowing umbrellas, Patrick, when it's not in the street?
Yeah, we are, we're allowing them in outdoor dining, yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
It's the only, the only shade structure we would be permitting.
So um, you guys are all right, as long as we condition that they have to remove the existing, what they've got out there. And Patrick, go ahead.
No, no, I, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead, Madam Chair, finish.
Yeah, I thought you were gonna say, I kinda interrupted you before. Go, go ahead.
Well, I just, there, there's been a comment being made about decisions and, and the effectiveness of the effective date of outdoor dining uses, and I, I would just remind the commission that if there are conditions or outstanding items that need to get done, the outdoor dining cannot operate until those things are addressed. So approving something tonight does not imply that tomorrow, everybody uh can start eating outside at this establishment.
Penguin would be able to start as long as their seat number complies, because they've already provided
No.
Certificate of Insurance.
Well, right, so the insurance is an issue, but also.
They already submitted the insurance, Mr. Hagney said. So what else are they missing?
They, well, they'll need zoning and building permits, and that doesn't happen in, in, in a, in a morning, so.
Okay, so that means that both Orietta and Penguin need to bring their seating inside until they've done all that.
Right. I just wanted to, I was gonna wait till after this application, because.
Okay, so very clear, Mr. Hagney. The whole bending over backwards thing, you may not make it for the weekend, but you gotta get those tables out of the way until you have all your permits, or can we take it back that we approved it?
Well, you've given, you've given a clear directive, and if they're not in compliance, then they can't.
They don't meet the condition, they can't operate, right?
Well, then it's a zoning violation, and then they can be closed.
Okay, all right, so those tables and chairs have to come inside. And you have to be very firm on that, because this getting everybody back inside the barn when they got the use to the wild woolly COVID days has not been easy.
Understood.
All right, okay, so Patrick, on, on Orietta, that's gonna make Mr. McRae a lot more comfortable, because he didn't, that was his concern. So now till everything's done on Orietta, including the permit. They have to bring their tables inside, and that goes in the decision letter. Do we need to remake that motion? Or is it clear enough in the motion?
I, I think the motion is clear. I just, I just wanted to talk about the next steps. Um, just so everyone's aware of what exactly.
Okay, so for Penguin, they have submitted their insurance, but now they need to get their permits, and they will have to do that with, they've gotta get their tables inside. I think Mr. McRae's gonna enjoy this motion more. Where he can make that clear.
Okay.
All righty, okay, so does there any further comment from the commission? No. Uh, is anybody object to closing this application at this time? Seeing no objection, this application is hereby closed. Uh, we would entertain a happy motion from the secretary.
There's nothing in my contract that says happy.
All righty, Mr. McRae, go ahead.
Okay, this is a sixty one Lewis Street application, P L P Z twenty twenty three one oh two. Applicant is requesting approval of outdoor uh, twelve outdoor dining seats within an existing driveway and on the public sidewalk on a four thousand eight hundred square foot lot located in the C G B zone. Um, most approve the site plan noting the following, prior to zoning permit, an application shall provide a secure um, the existing tables and chairs installed uh must be removed prior to building permit issuance. Uh, all necessary planning and zoning requirements of per section six one hundred of the B Z R. All necessary interdepartmental conditions per section six one hundred of the B Z R. Compliance with accessible seating requirements. Um, the application is limited to twelve seat, uh, twelve seats, eight in the driveway and four on the sidewalk. And applicant is requesting seating from April first to November twentieth, and the hours operations will be from eleven A M to ten P M, Monday through Sunday.
And the A D A is the sidewalk?
It doesn't necessarily need to be the sidewalk, it just needs to be shown.
Okay, all right, okay, do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Mr. Lowe has seconded. Mr. Yesky, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five, nothing, and we go to another restaurant. Mr. Hagney, are you done with restaurants now?
I, I am no longer handling restaurants. I will be back to uh the public hearing, so, thank you.
See you then. All righty, our next application is Rosamir Dion for Lugano's uh, for a final site plan for outdoor dining. Uh, thirteen ninety two East Putnam. Uh, we received an email about half an hour, forty minutes ago that the applicant, I don't have it open, but that the applicant changed the seating number to twenty one, which is what would what could be accommodated, if you guys can, wanna look at that.
We have it.
No, you don't actually have to look at it. I missed a lot of the stuff that came in today, because I was trying, trying to research, so. All righty, um, who's representing Lugano's, Mr. LaRoe?
I believe it's Mr. Wolovitz.
There he is, Mr. Wojtowicz.
Wow, need my glasses.
Yeah, I have that trouble. Mr. Wojtowicz, uh, if you would, I hope we said your name right. If you unmute, you are, no, it's W O I T O. You need to, yeah, well.
I've got my glasses on, I can't read.
Yeah, Mr. Wojtowicz, you just muted again. Unmute, and so you can come talk. Oh, there you go, you're good now, talk to us.
Yes, I'm, I'm working on it.
Okay, pronounce your name for us first.
My name is David Wojtowicz.
Oh, we said it right.
Yeah, you, when you see it spelled, I tell people, when it's not in front of you, it gets a little.
There you go.
But.
All right.
Uh, I am the architect for J P Franz in Southport, Connecticut. And we are also the architectural firm that designed and built out this restaurant several years ago. So we, we have a good track record with this operator. Um, uh, and we both found it confusing how twenty eight seats got written into the documents, but it, it has always been twenty one on the drawings and, and well documented that twenty one seats will come out from the interior and will put twenty one on the exterior. Uh, but I'm open to any questions. I, I know the site and the restaurant very well. And eat there when I can, uh, not always down at Greenwich, but uh, it's, it's a good establishment. And eat there when I can, not always down at Greenwich, but it's a good establishment.
Well, the health approval was for the twenty-one seats. Apparently, you've submitted to us a plan showing twenty-one seats.
Correct.
I don't see any other outstanding issues. Does anybody on the commission have any questions?
No.
Okay, does anybody from the public wish to ask any questions about this application?
I did text Jackie Kaufman. I noticed she was on and she had she is very adamant that she has no concerns here naturally.
Okay, I yes, I think she had an interest in the downtown ones. All right, so here seeing no. Oh, but you may know an answer. You may know something that came up yesterday. Do you know how much of their property or what the location would be that's in the state right of way? Do you remember that from any of the architectural drawings?
I could access the survey, but I'm not exactly sure there is much of anything in the state right away.
Yeah, we weren't sure. Somebody somebody asked yesterday. Don't worry about it. It's not relevant to this, because the part that you're proposing is is in their is on their private property.
Absolutely. Your your the back of sidewalk is usually the property line, which is state. The state has right of way if it's a state road, but it's it's at the back of street sidewalk here. It is not on any farther in than normal.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wojcicki. Okay, well, so with that, anybody on the commission object to closing this application at this time?
No.
Seeing no objection, this application is hereby closed, and we will entertain a motion, after which we have one more restaurant.
This is one thirty-nine, thirteen ninety-two.
Ninety-two.
East Bottom Avenue, application PLPZ twenty twenty-three, one five three. Applicants requesting approval of outdoor dining seats on private property located in the LPR and PR PRIO zones. Motion to approve the site plan noting the following. Prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall provide or secure all necessary planning and zoning commission requirements per section six, one hundred of the BZR, all necessary interdepartmental conditions per section six, one hundred of the BZR. The applicant is limited to twenty-one seats on the private patio. The applicant is requesting seating from April first to November twentieth. And the hours operation will be Monday through Saturday, eleven thirty AM to ten PM and Sunday, eleven thirty AM to nine PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Jenkins has seconded. Mr. Yaski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five, nothing, and we go to our next. Thank you very much, Mr. Wojcicki.
Thank you, board members.
Our last restaurant application is from Hungbin Lin for Kiseki at three fifty-five Greenwich Avenue. And this is for twelve seats on at that location in a node. And do we have an applicant? Doom do doom. Mr. Mason, I assume is the applicant. If you would unmute, Mr. Mason, you're all set to go. Mr. Mason, you need to unmute. Mr. Mason, if you would unmute.
Okay.
You got it. Great.
Very good. All right.
All right. Okay, go ahead, sir. As far as we could tell, does anybody on the commission have any questions? As far as we could tell, all of this was in compliance. Does anybody remember anything that is not in compliance?
Oh, I think they've got everything except for they don't need to sewer said it's okay in the no parking zone and they have to they sewer wants them to take a look at some stuff, but that's it.
All righty, so you're gonna make that comment, right? All righty then. Okay, any questions from the commission? I think we said no. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on three fifty-five Greenwich Avenue? Nobody from the public wishes to speak. Does anybody on the commission object to closing this application at this time? Seeing no objection, this application is hereby closed. Mr. McRae, the commission would entertain a motion.
Okay, three fifty-five Greenwich Avenue. Application PLPZ twenty twenty-three, one five four. Applicant is requesting approval of outdoor dining seats within the street noted that will displace four spaces at a two thousand square foot lot located in the central Greenwich business retail zone and CGI zones. Commission finds that highway division issued comments on five four twenty-three indicating that the proposed configuration and the no parking area is acceptable. The sewer division issued comments on five sixteen twenty-three requesting the applicant's been assigned a letter of acknowledgement receipt of their P and Z comments. Therefore, motion to approve the site plan noting the following prior to zoning permit. The applicant shall provide or secure per the sewer division comments the applicant has submitted an acknowledgement letter dated five twenty-three, twenty-three. All necessary planning and zoning commission requirements per section six hundred of the BZR. All necessary interdepartmental conditions per section six hundred of the BZR. The application is limited to ten seats in the node and two accessible tables of two seats on the sidewalk for a total of twelve. The node seating shall show conformance to applicable Connecticut occupancy codes. The applicant is requesting seating from April first to November twentieth. And the hour operations for the restaurant are Tuesday through Sunday, twelve PM to twelve AM.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Jenkins has seconded. Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
Mr. Yaski?
Aye.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five, nothing. Thank you very much, Mr. Mason.
Okay, thank you.
We now go to the public hearing. Mr. Brazili?
Yes, ready.
And you can hear us fine, no problem and all that, right?
No problems. Very good.
Thank you. All righty, hello, Mr. Hagney. Now we're opening the public hearing. Our first application on the public hearing is application number eleven. And that's Fred N. Durante, Jr. For a final re-subdivision at three twenty-eight Palmer Hill Road. Seated on this application is Jenkins for Levy. And Mr. Lowe is taking the application back and seated for himself, so it will be Albin, McRae, Jenkins, Yaski, and Lowe. Thank you. Mr. Hagney, if you would proceed. We've solved one problem today. I believe we have a DPW sign off as of today.
Yes, Madam Chair, for the record, Tom Hagney, on behalf of the applicant. We received a memo from engineering, which says approved for subdivision. It has a number of comments. And it really is is a very brief report from engineering. The one comment that the engineering did make that I do want to address is he's recommending an updated or replaced maintenance agreement between the property owners for the shared driveway.
Right.
The current one that.
This is your comment that it wasn't necessary, right?
Yeah, and I I looked at it again after receiving this. And it covers maintenance, it covers snow plowing. It's part of the title to each of these properties. It requires sharing expenses equally. All of those things would be in a an agreement I would write. Would I use the exact same language that they used in nineteen eighty-five? Probably not. We've revised the language, but that doesn't mean that the form that's of record now has anything wrong with it. It does all of the things it needs to do. And it may not be what one is is seeing in other instances, because we revolve, we these things evolve over time. But this is still good, and it still works. And it has worked for over thirty years, so I don't see the need
And have you submitted a new document? And have I saw that you have been saying that. Have you had this discussion with Mr. Paredes?
Yes, I and that's why he changed it to rather than required to recommend.
Okay. All right, okay, so we will. I think the thing to do is if we happen to make a decision, we will. We will include that. Your next question would be this issue of the remediation of the existing, the restoration of the open space. Have you advanced on that?
Yes, Madam Chair, we we my client did remediate the area. He rough graded and seeded with metal mix and also put in a barrier berm so that access was no longer permitted and planted that with shrubs.
And some photos were submitted today. Patrick, do you have them? I didn't get a chance to open them. I saw a heading that said there were photos of the open space. Could you share them perhaps with the commission?
I'm not sure I saw it today. I know we had that from last time.
This would be one forty-two from Ms. Anastasio. It was they came in from a neighbor. Mr. Hagney, while he's looking for those, I got a quick question. The the declaration, it's going to have to be updated to add in the new lot anyway, correct?
Did the additional open space that the?
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm going back, going back, step back. The declaration that Mr. Paredes is looking for. It would just need to have to be updated with the new lot, right? And add to add the new lot into the declaration?
That when that lot is conveyed out, it will be subject to this declaration. And the declaration reads that whoever is sharing in this driveway pays equally for its maintenance and repair. So I, again, I don't see from a legal standpoint that there is any additional reworking of the of this document that's needed.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'm still looking for this email. I'm sorry for the delay.
Madam Chair, I have it. It's up.
Oh, sorry, I was staring at my computer. Okay, so can we see this remediation that's been done? I see. And isn't there still pavement there? Oh, those are rocks.
I'm not sure this is displaying the remediation. I think this is showing the area to be. This is the remediation area, I think.
Okay, so this is today that is remediated, Mr. Hagney?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's both metal mix and mulch put in certain areas, and you can see the shrubs that are there on a berm so that access to this area would no longer be permitted or made accessible.
And do I see and the paving that's right below is what? The the cobblestones?
That's that's within the right of way or the sheer, I should say, the sheer driveway.
All right, and then to the left, the lighter soil is then still paving?
I don't believe so. I'm not sure. I'm not sure quite what that is.
I'm not wildly impressed, Mr. Hagney.
Well, that that's the the metal mix will fill in where the ground is is still bare. That that was the purpose of putting it down. But it has not yet grown.
Because it was done today?
It was done over the weekend, actually.
Oh, okay. All right, any anything else in the commission on this? Well, we ponder. I think you.
Yeah, I'm I'm I actually had a total loss of where that photograph is. I'm looking if I'm looking at the site.
Patrick, could you switch us out to the site plan so we can look at the site plan?
That would be the would be the driveway to the existing dwelling. Is that where that is? Because the open space is the little triangle down at the bottom of the hill.
No, that's the open, sorry, Mr. McRae. This is the open space of the prior subdivision.
Right.
And we 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 learned at the last meeting that there was a violation of that.
So what we got at the last meeting, we received photos and a report that the open space had been paved and was not open space, and there was a picture of asphalt. So now that's been addressed with the metal mix. I would have expected to see an honest to goodness open space restoration plan.
Mr. Hagney, is it is it within the boundaries of the development plan, or is that is it further up? I'm forgetting.
No, it well, it's as you're looking at the development plan, this property is at the bottom of the development plan and is the is east of where this subdivision or re-subdivision is proposed.
I see Mr. DeAndrea's hand up, Madam Chair. I don't know if he's.
Oh, Mr. DeAndrea? Well, I was just trying to read the conservation comments. Okay. I just let him in. We can. I assume that he knows what application he's on. Okay.
Yes.
Missed. Okay, so Mr. DeAndrea, did you want to add a comment to?
Couple of couple of quick comments. I was out on the site on May seventeenth. I took some photographs looking northerly along the open space. It was completely cleared of all the debris and and stockpiled materials that were intended for reuse, but they're all gone now. And as Mr. Hagney pointed out, there is a berm across the front of that. And there's also a little plaque noting Bedrock Park Inc. Established back in nineteen eighty-five, which Mr. Durante and his father dedicated to the owners of the subdivision. The blockage or the berm, if you will, as Mr. Hagney described it further south on the screen that you have in front of you. That was blocked by a berm and a couple of azaleas when I was there on May seventeenth at two o'clock. Since that time, as Mr. Hagney pointed out, Mr. Durante was intending to, and I believe accomplice that. I didn't see it myself, but he did clear it, regrade it, and was intended to seed it with metal mix. For those who are looking at the subdivision right now, as you can see, the open space is basically east of the existing driveway leading into Mr. Durante's home. And to the north of that is the proposed lot. So you can see that the very northern end of the open space is directly opposite that proposed entrance. So again, majority of the open space is to the south of this proposed driveway to the new lot.
Pat, if you could put up slide five, because that that's the both aerial and GIS.
Yeah, that's a good example.
And it's that that area right there is the open space.
All right, so the area that was paved since two thousand five is that red on the right, correct?
I wouldn't say that it was all paved, but there was some pavement, yes, and there were other materials in there such as historic, if you will, fence fences, but what do you call them? Cut granite is what I'm trying to get out. So those were historic pieces, but they were going to be reused. They've since been removed, but you're right.
But Mr. 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 DeAndrea, just for the just to make it clear.
Yes.
Using the open space as a staging area doesn't make it any better that you're storing stuff that's eventually going to go away. So you say, yes, it was going to be reused, but we plunked it there anyway. You're kind of losing your cause, so.
We understand. We understand the difference, but the fact is it's clean now, and it is open and plant and seeded. So it's going to come back to what had been intended back in nineteen eighty-five.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Mr. Hagney.
The other item that we discussed, whereas you mentioned briefly, Madam Chair, was the conservation comments. The reason that we proposed additional open space is only to respond to a comment that the commission had in their preliminary decision letter, which said if you can put some more open space near Palmer Hill Road, that would be encouraged. It is not required. The open space parcel that we were just looking at is fifteen point two percent of the entire site, including the other two lots and roadway.
We've had this conversation already.
Uh, we, we put it in an area that we thought the commission, uh, would want. Uh, we will, uh, we will provide a new declaration for that. Uh, but we cannot accommodate the comments on the, by the conservation commission because they want us to put it where the house site would be for the new lot.
So here's, so you said all that to us the last time we heard this application? And I think we kind of came around to that. But now I'm on a different tack, which is you had open space. That's great. It was fifteen point two percent. But guess what? It wasn't open space and it had pavement on it. Mr. DeAndrea gives me that it was part pavement, but it had pavement. Okay. Now there's some bushes on it and it's got some metal mix and it's open space. And it's called restored. Where I would like to go with this is that you give us a real restoration plan that conservation has signed off on for this open space that looks like the open space everywhere else that we try to work a subdivision, everywhere else that we've done one. And that you, you do give us, I'm happy to have that front area, but that you also give us a good plan for, I haven't seen the plan. Do you, do we have a plan for how you're gonna do that front area?
No, we were gonna just maintain it as is.
Hmm. I would like to have, so what they're looking for in the open space plan, what conservation is looking for is open space that has environmental value of some kind. Uh, that's the goal of it. It's making sure that in the highly paved neighborhoods, little kids have trees and people have some green space. Yes. You know this, I'm lecturing you on this, but the other thing is to have environmental value in it consistent with how you would treat open space. So what I would wanna see, okay, fine, let's drop the issue of getting new open space, but at least give us a really good job on what you are providing for open space and give us the agreement that is going to be respected. Mr. Wells?
Yeah, I just had a question, uh, for either Mr. DeAndrea or Mr. Higgy. And that is, has the pavement in the open space been removed or did you just put metal mix on top of it?
Want to answer that? The answer is yes. It's been removed. Um, and it's, as Tom pointed out, it was rough graded to get it all cleaned up and then taken the, uh, metal mix. But I think that, uh, the chair has the idea that we should provide a landscape plan that can be approved or accepted before you sign them the record sheet.
Yeah, I'm not gonna hold you unless someone else in the commission, I'm, I'm willing to condition it. But the only thing here is that there be a restoration plan and that it not be, I'm gonna buy a handful of seed at Home Depot and toss it on site. But I'm gonna do something that's environmentally valuable. Mr. McRae, go ahead.
Um, Mr. LaRoe, can you bring up the photos that were sent in again today? Cause actually I had a question about the front proposed, uh, open space because it seems when we're talking about, uh, value, there may be some value in that space in its strange way, depending on how you look at it.
There may be. And, and the question is, Mr. McRae, I think where you're going, that may be fine space. But I'm just saying, is the planting the best that it could be? Could they have a way of making it more valuable? And could we just have either our staff?
Yeah, the photographs may, may show.
Let's take a look at that. When I looked at it, I thought it was, I won't comment. I'll just, let's take another look at it.
The front, the front triangle of open space on Palmer Hill
You have the photo, Pat? Hold on just a second.
Yeah. That first one's pretty, we start with that, cause actually very interesting photo. Uh, slide up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's the open space there. Uh, that Japanese maple and, you know, those kind of things. It seems that I believe that's actually, uh, in the accessway.
No, you're, you're not, you're looking in the wrong direction, I believe.
This is the lot over here.
Yeah, to your left is the open space triangle. Right.
Right there. Yeah. Okay, so uh, right where you, the cursor is, that's the wall that's remaining. So the house is actually on top of that.
Correct.
Okay, so all of that space below the wall, down to the street and whatever's left over where the Japanese maple is and all of that other stuff that's growing is, is remaining. And that's actually de facto open space because it's, it's kind of undevelopable. Um, it's below, it's below the development line of the proper, of the house itself.
Wow, it just went weird. Okay. Okay, but Mr. Mr. McRae, where are you going?
What I'm saying is that
I just wanna plan that it's gonna be, at the end of the day, when this house is built, that either our staff or conservation are happy with how it looks and how it's planted and that it has environmental value. That's all we're asking for. What we would ask for, for any other open space, not debating whether this space is good or bad. We, I think at the last meeting, what I recall is there was a general consensus, we were okay with this. However, given the fact that the treatment of the fifteen point percent that already exists, I'm asking that there be a restoration plan in total and that we know that it's gonna have some environmental value, all that they're providing. That's all.
And, uh, Madam Chair, that is acceptable and we will work with the property owner for that.
Yeah, I don't think we need to solve your problem right now. But, um, actually, and I'm happy, you, you know, our staff is so familiar with what we've done to enhance sustainability and where we're headed with how landscaping is done, that, um, Patrick, I leave it to you. We could leave it optional, whether they work with either our staff or conservation.
I mean, we can always, we can always, I, I, I would leave it to staff. If, if you want us to consult with conservation, we'll, we'll do that, uh, uh, you know, on behalf of the commission, but I think it's best to be left with the partner.
I mean, cause we've been going through the whole species thing. So, uh, and, and in all, it's a great possibility, Mr. Higgy, that our staff will go, wow, wildflower seeds, that's awesome. But maybe they'll have some other suggestions that'll enhance the value of that open space.
Certainly, Madam Chair.
Offset the impact of you increasing the impervious here.
I, 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 I understand and, uh, I participated in planting pollinator areas with the conservation staff Saturday morning at Byron Park. So I, I think I have a little bit of an understanding about what
Hey, you know, you could, you could moonlight and help Mr. Duranty. And maybe Mr. DeAndrea, Andrea will help you. Oh, okay. Um, anybody, any other comments on the commission on this application? Those were the two outstanding things, the location of the supplemental open space, the fact that there wasn't a restoration plan, we bought into the location of the house. Um, the variance was issued for the, uh, paving in the accessway in, um, I, I don't think we have anything else, folks. Anything else?
No.
All right. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this application? Again, this is three twenty-eight Palmer Hill Road? Yes. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Noonan, you can go ahead. Uh, you have, well, she's in. No, she's not in. Sometimes it's grumpy. There she goes. All right, Ms. Noonan, as soon as you unmute, you can go ahead. You've got two minutes, but I think we've seen your, I know you've sent us some emails. If you would unmute. Ma'am? Let me just send you a clicky so you see.
Good.
There you go. All set.
Oh, thank you. Um, well, I wasn't planning on speaking, so this is strictly off the cuff. Uh, I'm not sure that the Japanese maple, uh, which I love looking at, is going to make it because there's a very, uh, small amount of property to the, as I am looking over, as you were looking at the pictures, to the left of the house that is there, which is three thirty-four. The, um, gray house, it's like a nineteen hundreds house. And, um, so I don't know that the Japanese maple is actually gonna make it. I'm, I have, um, the little space in front, the nine hundred square foot, uh, open space that you're talking about, the new open space. I mean, I, it seems to me it's just a piece of property that he doesn't need to use.
Right.
Uh, the other open space, uh, I did walk up there today. He's planted some uh, forest area bushes across the front. It's kind of closed off now and I, I have no idea what is going on behind there because, or what has or hasn't been done. But my big concerns are that when the homes uh, up above were built in the mid eighties, that property up above was all filled in. So what you're looking at, that hill that goes from forty feet to seventy feet elevation, that was, that's all filled. And all of those boulders you see along the sides of the paved shared driveway there, that beautiful stone wall, there's a whole row of very tall, um, mature evergreen trees, uh, fir trees up and back there. My, my understanding is that everything there might be going. That it will all be pulled out and refilled and that there will be multiple, um, terraced uh, drainage equipment. And the house up and back, uh, where the big row of, uh, tall trees is, which is what conservation
Wants to protect.
Yeah. So that's, that's my concern. And, and I've wondered, you know, if you, if you do all, I mean, it's a steep hill and it's a small piece of property. And I think that the house is, uh, they have a, as an eighteen hundred square foot footprint, which isn't very large. And I think, I would imagine that so it can fit in with all the restrictions that are required with setbacks, et cetera. Obviously, I know nothing about this, but I am, um, I am concerned. Obviously. And, uh, that's it.
Okay, thank, thank you, ma'am. All right. So I'm looking at it. Mr. Mr. DeAndrea, are you still there?
Yes.
Do you have drainage going into the roots of the trees there?
The, um, the drainage for this proposal as presented is being provided under the permeable driveway to the east of the garage.
Hold on, I'm scrolling down.
Whatever, um, her approach or rationale is, is accurate in her assessment of the fact that there will be the overgrown and climax evergreens, uh, they will be removed and they're shown to be removed.
Madam Chair, it's on the screen.
Oh, thank you. Cause I was scrolling. Okay. So those, okay, I got it now.
Mr. DeAndrea, you, you indicate tree removal here, but I don't see a tree in this area. Would that mean that by your recommendation?
Not many over there. And as we discussed before, it's going to be necessary to bring the utilities up through the accessway. Um, the more or less twenty-one foot wide accessway. And of course, that trenching will be narrow and controlled. And we'll work around all the features that are there. But as you can see, we have the, uh, sanitary sewer manhole right opposite the driveway or the accessway, um, to the, to the lot. Um, I wanted to clarify that the stones along the side of the driveway are riprap and then they're planted in between to stabilize them. And again, they've been there stable since nineteen eighty-five. You can see that there's a little corner in the open space. If you want, um, us to plant a tree, I'm sure that could be accomplished. And that could be shown on the, uh, the, uh, landscape plan or plans that will be submitted. So yes, the, oh, the evergreen trees will come down. Um, the pavement that's now serving number three twenty-eight will be eliminated. There will be a home placed there. It's designed to sit on the existing, um, grading for all intensive purposes. And, um, it's all compliant with zoning and engineering and aesthetics and function.
Mr. DeAndrea, if I get back to the tree, just question I had to answer maybe Mr. McRae and Mrs. Noonan's point, that, that red maple or the Japanese maple, I, I believe by your surveying, it's not on the property and therefore there's probably a greater distance than that picture shows from the tree than, than maybe this is showing.
Correct. Unfortunately, I don't have it plotted and, you know, we can add that to the landscaping plan and everything will be done to protect it. Um, but it's, it's not, um, uh, something that we can avoid.
It's, but it's offsite.
We believe it's offsite, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's what I was trying to ask. Thank you.
Okay, so in terms of replacing trees, have you guys thought about how many trees you would be able to replace of the evergreens you're removing?
A short answer is no. Uh, uh, the house design that, or the, the footprint, I should say, that Mr. DeAndrea has put on the plan is nothing more than a placeholder to show it meets setbacks. And that you could fit a dwelling of a moderate, modest size on the property. Uh, as part of the, the sign off for a building permit, that will all be reviewed by staff and engineering and will go through the whole process again, not in front of, uh, the commission, but with, with everybody else. And so
Mr. Higgy, how would you, how would you feel about us saying, how would you respond to us saying that when you submit the development plan, um, that the commission has asked that you make every attempt to do a one for one replacement on the existing trees being removed?
No, Tony, is that realistic? I, I, I'm not as familiar with the site as Tony is.
If it's not realistic, you can duke it out with staff because it'll be an administrative review, but at least staff will have the guidance that the commission was looking for a one for one replacement.
I think it would be appropriate to consider that the one for one, uh, in part be, um, addressed within the restore, restoration, rather, of the open space.
I couldn't live with that. That's a very good idea because what we're looking for you is, we're looking for you to do is to give us real valuable open space in that area. And if you had, um, a great place for the pollinators that Mr. Higgy, you know, has learned so much about, um, that would be perfect. So, um, okay, so we could word it like that, that if the commission agrees to that, that you would make every effort to do at least a one for one replacement and that this could potentially be included, a part or all could be looked at for inclusion in your restoration plan for the two areas of open space designated.
I think that's very, very wise of the chair.
Oh, that means I, okay, that means that was too easy, huh?
No.
I better toughen up. I better toughen up, Mr. DeAndrea.
I do wanna say one more thing. For those of you who haven't had the opportunity, and it would have been nice to do so, is to walk behind, um, Mr. Duranty's home up by the, the, um, upper garden because you, you would be impressed. And as I was, I would said, you have too many plants up here, Fred. But regardless, he does a tremendous job in landscaping.
So he's, he, yeah, so he'll get it and he'll be good with it. That's fantastic.
Be happy to do so.
Okay, that's fantastic. Any other comments from the commission on this? Does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
No.
All righty, this application is hereby closed and, um, uh, you figure anybody object to deciding it tonight? No. Okay, so we will probably decide it tonight. All right. Thank you both, Mr. DeAndrea and Mr. Higgy.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
All righty. Our next application is Greenwich Country Day School.
Oh, Madam Chair, there was more hands up.
I know, but, oh, that's Bruce Cohen. That's okay. Oh, shoot, shoot. Oh, yeah, Mr. Romeo, I said, I said, okay, all right. I'm, I, I promised, Mr. Romeo, go ahead. Okay. Um, do I need to make a new motion to close this application since I've already closed it? Okay, so folks, um, do I need to move to open it again?
I, I guess I would, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I hereby move that this application be reopened so that Mistress Romeo, who's, I shouted out, application, Miss Eleven, just for you, Mr. Romeo.
Well, I, I wanted to speak.
Wait, wait.
Quietly.
No, you didn't raise your hand. Okay, wait, wait.
My hand was raised.
Mr. Romeo, no, you didn't raise it early enough. Hold on. Um, I hereby move that this application be reopened for, uh, three twenty-eight Palmer Hill.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, Mr. Romeo, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, let me say, uh, uh, I've been a neighbor of Mr. Duranty.
uh, for over forty years. And I've known Mr. Duranty longer than he's known himself.
Two minutes.
Cause I knew when he was.
In, in, yeah.
And, and he has, he has done a fabulous job. Um, in that redevelopment of his, the property up there. I was here all through the development. Uh, like I said, I've been his neighbor for over forty years. Um, and quite frankly, uh, all of this talk about the restoration and, and landscaping, he's a landscaper, uh, himself.
So he'll be happy.
Anything he does, he does put quality. And a lot of you know his work. He's been a contractor in the town of Greenwich. For, you know, I don't know how many years. His father was a carpenter for all his life. And, um, uh, I, I just say, I, I think that I have complete confidence. I see that site. I've seen that site for the last, I'd say forty years. See it every day. I have no problem with, with what he's doing and, and I support it. And, uh, quite frankly, to be honest with you, uh, if somebody was walking on my property, uh, I live on a private road and it's private. And if I have trespassers on it coming up and looking at my property without authority, I, I would have them arrested. So.
All right. Okay. Okay. Mr. Romeo, just, you know, we always ask people, just comment on the application. You are saying he will do a great job with the restoration.
Right.
He will do a great job with this development and that you support.
After all, he, he's going to be looking at it himself. He's, he still lives there. He's not going anywhere. So whatever is done is going to be done right because he has to look at it for the rest of his life.
Great. Okay. So you support the application and you're assuring us that he's going to do a great job.
And I'll, I'll be watchful, I too.
Great. Okay. That's a good thing. Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Bye bye.
Anybody have any comments on that?
We need to close.
Yep, I know that. First, I gotta make sure you're all happy. Okay. I hereby move that this application be closed. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. And I did a voice vote because it's just closing it. We've already done it twice. Alrighty. Um, now we go to application number twelve, uh, which is, and we need to take Mr. DeAndrea out, right? All right. Application number twelve, which is Greenwich Country Day School for a final resub.
Hold on, you got Dennis.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Dennis. God. So, um, Mr. Yeski is recusing from this application. He has a relationship with Greenwich Country Day and Mr. Wells will be seated for Mr. Yeski. And if you would just, you can just blot out your picture and, yep. Okay. Um, hello, Mr. Cohen. Um, again, this is a final re subdivision to revise the common lot lines. Uh, this is applies to four oh one Old Church and fifty Fairfield Road. And as mentioned previously, seated on this application will be Mr. Wells for Mr. Yeski and Ms. Jenkins for Mr. Levy, as well as the other regular members. Uh, Mr. Cohen, before you begin, as you probably heard from Ms. Cronin, we discussed at length, um, one of us has a real struggle with lot line revisions. Your proposal is to eliminate the lot at fifty Fairfield Road and merge it into, do a lot line revision at fifty Fairfield Road and merge it in with four oh one church. At the same time, you propose to spin back out what was originally forty eight Fairfield Road and make that a separate lot. As the commission discussed it yesterday, you would begin, you're beginning with two lots. Four oh one Old Church and fifty Fairfield Road and you would end with one, with another two lots. Four oh one Old Church and forty eight Fairfield Road. Where I was stuck yesterday and I would be very happy if you could open your presentation on this point would be that forty eight Fairfield was subsumed into four oh one Old Church already. And you have filed a map in which it no longer exists. When you put forty eight Fairfield back into existence, you were creating a new lot for the record. And if you could open from there and help me because I read case law last night and I read definitions and I was so stuck. I'd love to open there and I saved you all the time of having to talk.
Thank you. Um, Bruce Cohen representing Greenwich Country Day School and the first part of the application, as you say, uh, Madam Chair, has to do with the, uh, lot line revision, uh, or a more, um, accurately a determination that we're asking the commission to make that what we're proposing, uh, does not constitute a subdivision or, or re subdivision. And it's, uh, very important to the second part of our application, which is the final site plan, special permit application, uh, to, um, uh, replace the existing, uh, small size, uh, gym and basketball court known as the, uh, portion of the athletic center known as the, uh, uh, south gym with a, a larger one on essentially the same, uh, footprint without the re subdivision finding, uh, we can't go forward with, uh, with the uh, second part of the application. So it's, it's critical that we satisfy the commission on the first uh, point. Uh, I guess to, to begin with, I would just point out, uh, that uh, use of, uh, mailing addresses is not really completely accurate, yeah. Uh, in terms of what we're doing. I mean, it's a shorthand approach of talking about pieces, but they, they don't exactly match up. So rather than do that, I think maybe we should show the picture. So, uh, um, Pat, if you could turn to the first image, which is the aerial that shows, uh, all of the, uh, the portion of, uh, the, uh, the, the main campus as it's known, uh, of Greenwich Country Day School, which is at, uh, four oh one Old Church Road and, uh, in, uh, bounded in the solid yellow line is the property presently owned by Greenwich Country Day School. Uh, we've also outlined just for reference purposes, uh, the, um, the, the parcel that we're pos- proposing to, uh, involve in and bring into the, uh, the, uh, four oh one, uh, uh, Old Church Road main campus. Um, and, and I think the next two, uh, images, uh, Pat, show that fairly clearly. Here's, here is a, um, survey of the entire property. Superimposed on that is in blue the portion of the property that we, uh, still own under the, uh, Greenwich Country Day School name. And, um, our proposal is, uh, shown on the next, um, image, which is to move that property line in a way that no longer encloses the first blue image, but, uh, does the second, uh, a blue image. And the reason for that is to, to really extract from the FAR count of the campus, the seven thousand plus uh, square feet of floor area that is, uh, shown, uh, now within that blue area. So the issue is, uh, from the point of view of, uh, determination that we're asking you to make, uh, of, uh, the fact that we believe that this is a, uh, lot line revision and, and not a re subdivision or subdivision. Uh, it's really, um, I think focuses in the definition of re subdivision, which is in the, uh, definition section of the subdivision regulation. And I think in particular, the one that I heard discussed at yesterday's briefing session had to do with, uh, a subdivision, uh, as defined, which is a change in a map of an approved or, uh, recorded subdivision that such that materially affects. I'm sorry, materially definishes, diminishes the size of any lot. Well, it could be said, I suppose, that the first blue image is being diminished, but my view is different. My view is exactly. My view is that that lot is in fact being enlarged because it's now becoming a part of, of four oh one. And what we're doing is i- in effect, simply moving the, the property line that now separates the first blue uh, portion around the second blue portion. So as it was noted yesterday, the, uh, uh, the, the result of this is we start with two lots, we end with two lots. We have a simple movement of a, of the division line between those two lots. So I, I suppose, uh, you could take issue with, uh, my interpretation of, uh, these regulations. However, uh, fortunately, uh, courts pay more attention to what the commission uh, has determined in the past to be a reasonable interpretation of its own regulations. And in the past, as I think we're all familiar, uh, the commission has approved, uh, in, uh, several occasions. Um, most recently, uh, to my knowledge, being the one that, uh, we did with, um, uh, Indian Spring Land Company, uh, when we moved a property line to enclose, uh, quite a different, uh, area that had originally been enclosed. Uh, the commission itself has so interpreted, uh, that definition. And I think to take a different view at, at this point would really be contrary to the past practice of the commission. So I have given my, uh, my client, the, our opinion, which is that what we're proposing, uh, to do here in this wacky image.
Um, it's weird.
Doesn't weird. Yeah. What have you done, Pat?
I don't know. It's Patrick goes drinking halfway through the meeting. So while we digressed, Mr. Cohen, the, uh, the focus that you're making is on the lot that's being subsumed. And I'm more troubled by the lot that was already filed as merged into four oh one and is now coming back out and being, becoming a separate lot again. That's what I see as being the resub.
That was never a lot, uh, a, a separate lot that was, uh, merged. Uh, there's a history that we provided of, uh, exactly the, uh, background of this property. The, the fairly large chunker property to the left uh, represents a purchase that the school made some years ago from the Comperethwaite family, uh, who lived in that house, uh, that we're talking about. But there were a separate lot as such. Um, but none of the, uh, none of the.
Well, I'm sorry. So Mr. Cohen, how could it not have been a separate lot of the people lived in the house and paid taxes on it?
The, the outlines of the boundaries were different. They, they, they were, it was separate. It had a street address. It didn't look exactly like that.
Okay. So it doesn't look exactly the same, but it got subsumed into four oh one. The property of these people got subsumed. And now a portion or with different lines is coming back out as a new line and we're a new lot. And what I'm stuck on conceptually stuck, and I looked through all the case law last night, is that you are spinning out a new lot. Yes, you still have two lots when you finish, but you're spinning out a new lot. I'm not troubled by the fact that you're subsuming fifty Fairfield. I normally struggle with that, but I'm finally past it. I'm stuck, I'm stuck on this other one. So I, that I'm still not, you are creating a new lot, which is going to be separate and you are going to file it on the land records. That's a new lot.
We had a separate lot before. It was under the ownership of an LLC that if approved, will transfer title to that yellow portion to the school. And in exchange, the, the blue portion will be owned by the LLC.
Sounds good, but they're completely different properties. They don't touch. They have nothing in common. So they can't be a lot line revision because you're not revising a line between those two properties. You are taking one lot and putting it into four oh one.
We certainly are revising the lot line. If you, if you start at Fairfield Road and see where that blue access line comes.
Yes, I see it.
Begins at Fairfield Road and it now encloses a part, a parcel shown in blue. It will be moved to wrap around that piece as, as now shown in, in, in blue. No question in my mind that this does not constitute a re subdivision or a subdivision. And I think a history that we've included of the, the deeds and the prior approvals by P and Z will establish that.
Okay. I'm still, Mr. Mr. Cohen, I'm just, you know, I've been trying to think this through since we got the materials on Friday. Not there yet. Does anybody on the commission wish to comment?
Um, so, Mr. Mr. Cohen, I'm, I'm looking at the map that's in front of us. As a lot line revision, uh, I, I don't see how much of a common lot line is still there between the old piece and the new piece or the new configuration? Um, and I guess what is it? One of the maps that you provided, uh, subdivision map, six forty three, i- i- lot number three, I think is the original piece of property.
Yeah.
And, and lot number two is, is the one that we're actually kind of seeing here now that's the common lot line is being removed, right? So there was, you know, at one time, three separate pieces of property, the country day school, lot three, lot two.
Hmm.
Okay. So I'm, I'm a little befuddled as to, you know, a lot line revision that creates a whole complete geometry um, just for carving out one piece of property. Um, I think I, I, to me, understanding how this is going to work, it's basically an FAR issue. I just want to make sure that we're not treading in, uh, this kind of strange area where we're is it, is it a lot line revision? It is a subdivision, re subdivision. I think actually I would love to have, uh, our counsel opine on this as well.
Oh, I would too.
Cause I think actually understanding all of the materials that you, you have given us, I want to make sure we're going to go in the right direction. Because I would, uh, the, the country day school property is large. I want to make sure that what we decide uh, now in the, this, these times actually can carry over to the next. Uh, if there's any more development or if, you know, lot one of that old subdivision gets, uh, you know, assumed or any other pieces of property that we're seeing on this particular map gets, get assumed.
So, Mr. So Mr. Cohen, um, adding to that, uh, just so you know, I, I the, the transaction, the changes that you're proposing um, and what you will, what you will end up with, I have no obstacle. I have no, at this point, I have absolutely no objection to the two lots you end up with or the fact that you want to keep this other property separate. You know what you're doing and why. I also recognize that you have a development plan for this. I don't see this as an opportunity to squeak more open space out of the school. But it's not what I'm looking for. What I'm concerned about is that when we make this decision, we don't create a precedent. And I see this as different than, um, the Indian Spring one. But maybe I'm missing something. I, but I, I don't want someone to come in and say, well, we're doing this lot line revision and here's this new lot when we have been avoiding that, that, um, what was it called? The free throw? We eliminated the, so carefully, the commission eliminated the free throw. And my problem with this is it looks a little bit like that's what's happening. So I do want counsel, but we don't want to stand in your way uh, for the school's development. We don't, I don't want more open space. We never, I mean, we want to be, I want to be supportive. I don't want more open space. I, I think you have no wetlands issue here. You've, you're in good shape with wetlands. So a wetlands review would not be painful. And what, uh, what we, I would agree with Mr. MacRae to ask for, if you would give us time to just talk to counsel and maybe he'll just kick sense into my head, but I need to hear from him. And I could not reach him today and I tried several times.
I, I certainly don't object to that. You, uh,
Great.
I, I'm hopeful that, uh, the law department would support my view of this thing. I.
Yeah, me too. I, I, you know, and that'd be fine.
I would like to respond to one thing that Nick, uh, uh,
Mr. MacRae.
MacRae mentioned, and that is that there is a portion of the new lot that does immediately follow the, uh, the boundary, the existing boundary line off of, of Fairfield, uh, road. However, I don't believe that, that following all or any portion of the existing boundary is, is significant. I think what's significant is whether or not the, the definition of a re subdivision has been met. And I think that the subdivision regulations are pretty clear. I think this represents uh, a, a compliance with that in the sense that, uh, it, it confirms my opinion that it doesn't constitute a re subdivision, but I certainly, uh, expect, uh, that you would, uh, seek counsel from your attorney.
Okay. But now you said that you have a problem moving forward. If we don't see this as a lot line revision, um, you know.
Absolutely.
Why do you have a problem moving forward?
Because we would exceed the FAR.
Oh, but I, I, I think, are you? Oh, but I, I, I think, are you, I'm personally, and I, I'm not supposed to indicate how one would vote. I currently have no objection to what you're ending up with. I just want to make sure that our process is unassailable in our decision-making so that someone else doesn't come along and point this out. I have no problem with where you're ending up. So we're not going to stop. I'm not, at this point, nothing has been given to me and I don't want to commit the commission. Nothing has been raised in my mind as an obstacle.
Well, uh, that's fine. I didn't mean to say that I, I didn't plan to present the next
All right. Okay.
step in our application. And I understand that we'll put this aside until the commission satisfied as to uh, to the definition.
Okay, that would be great. So.
So I have nothing to add about this part of the application.
All right. Okay. So commission, any other comments?
Yes, I thought obstacles are my job.
Yeah, normally, but I thought it was just restaurants. And Pat, can you take down the visual? Cause I can't see people. Okay, good. All right. So anybody have any comments on the subdivision? I do appreciate um, that there were questions that most people were seeing it as a lot line revision yesterday and not a re sub, but I really appreciate us being cautious with this. And um, if it's of any help, Mr. Cohen, I looked at the state definition last night and was thinking, wow, someday you'll have to give me the history on why we don't use the state definition.
Because we're a home rule town.
Yeah, both. That doesn't mean we can't steal other people's language.
You're absolutely right.
I mean, I steal language from other places all the time.
Just when I was getting used to our language.
Yeah. Well, I just thought, wow, there's read so clearly, but then they've probably updated it more recently than nineteen seventy. Anybody else? Any comments on this application?
Uh, there is one comment that I'd like to add, actually, in response, uh, Ms. Mock had a, a comment on the re subdivision. And she noted that uh, uh, she was concerned that we were uh, basically moving that uh, the piece that I guess was called fifty Fairfield uh, Road into the campus. And she was concerned that it would not act as the continued protection that it's always acted to the open space area immediately adjacent to it. And all I can respond on that is that the, the school has absolutely no plans for that parcel except to leave it in its present wooded state as, as it's been historically. And obviously, we couldn't do anything with it without coming back uh, to the commission.
Well, in, in the context of that, I didn't want to raise that at this point, which was uh, the context of that, it, my reply would be we can address that issue at the time that we do the site plan. Or the time that we decide the subdivision and we could talk about buffering of open space. Cause don't forget with this application, you now have the new landscape regulations applying to it. So you are going to have to think about buffering your surrounding neighborhood with the new landscape regulations, as you well know. So it, I, the problem will probably solve itself.
Yes, indeed. We submitted a pretty uh, uh, robust landscape plan with
Yeah.
a site plan application.
Well, and as I recall, as you know, uh, we were, um, the commission was invited to the last ARC meeting. And as I recall, they, they had no problems with it. They were pleased with where it was going. Maybe recalling incorrectly. Um, okay. So that's Mr. Cohen. Anybody else from the commission? All right. Um, anybody from the public? Yes. Uh, we have one member of the public who has a hand up. And I will let them in. And Ms. Fessoliotis, whenever you're ready, we're limiting public comment to two minutes, but you're well familiar with that on the BET.
Thank you, Margarita. Um, I just wanted to support your interpretation that this is not a lot line division. While I appreciate Greenwich Country Day, I think they've been great neighbors. And they've listened to the concerns of the neighbors, especially with traffic. Um, they've solved a lot of traffic problems in that area. Um, I would just caution the commission because as you've said, uh, Ms. Albin's, that your decision would set precedent. And I would even argue that your precedence for the Fairfield Avenue property was um, not well, well done for the Indian Field property. Uh, but um, as such, um, I would just caution you going forward in approving this, um, until there's a clear indication from our law department that this is indeed um, not a
Lot line, lot line. No, that it is a re sub, but not a re sub. Whatever. Yes, I know what you mean. Okay. Well, that's nice. Now just remind me, when you guys are deciding on something on the BET, I get to come and say whether you're right or wrong. Okay?
Yeah, no problems.
All right.
We're, we're told that all the time. You know that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. I don't think we have any other public comment. And with that, uh, so Mr. Cohen, we would leave this application open and we would move to the next one. All right. And I am sorry, I really did try to get our illustrious and revered, landyous council in town. All right. So now we go to your site plan application, uh, application number thirteen. Greenwich Country Day School for a final site plan and special permit to make additions and alterations to the school's existing athletic building located at four oh one Old Church Road. And seated still on this application are Wells for Yaski and Jenkins for Levy and the other regular members. Go ahead, Mr. Cohen. I won't even interfere with your presentation this time. And there you go.
Thank you. Bruce Cohen, representing Greenwich Country Day School on this application uh, for a site plan and special permit approval to replace the, the existing uh, south gym, uh, which is a portion of the school's athletic center with a, a new gym, uh, with a regulation sized basketball court, which is the key element of this proposal. And, and Pat, if I could turn to images two and then three. And that will give you a pretty good idea of what we're talking about, or at least where we're talking about it. So, oops, next one. There's a, a survey of the entire campus and we marked in pink the existing um, athletic center, which as you can see is um, is located on the uh, east side of the campus. North is, uh, on this, uh, images to the right. Uh, we've outlined in uh, red, that portion of the athletic center that will be replaced by uh, a new gym structure. And that's shown on the next image. And there, there it is. And as you can see, it's uh, it's larger in size, but essentially located on the same uh, footprint, uh, with a, a fairly small expansion. There is uh, an additional FAR, which is why we've got to try to uh, to make the changes requested in the uh, previous re subdivision application in order to uh, move the fairly large residence uh, which the uh, which is in the name of an LLC controlled by uh, the school off of the, uh, the main campus and into its uh, separate uh, parcel. Uh, you'll note in terms of the location that um, uh, and we'll show that with some photos a little later, that uh, the um, athletic center is uh, to the left of a, uh, another portion of the athletic facilities of the school, which consists of tennis courts and a pool complex, as well as a, a small playing field. Um, that is, uh, it's sort of terraced from the athletic center down uh, to Fairfield Road. Um, and uh, the uh, the pool and tennis complex is at a, uh, constructed at a terrace uh, somewhat below the athletic center. Uh, Pat, could you turn to the next image? And this will show the existing uh, school, uh, that portion of the school that we're talking about with the south gym that we're proposing to replace on the right of this photograph. And you'll note these various structures have been added together over the years as a, as a single center for a variety of the school's athletic uh, uh, programs. And the next uh, photograph is a make-believe photograph that shows where the uh, new uh, gym would be proposed to be located. Um, the, I should point out at this point that uh, ARC has reviewed, uh, and I think as you know, uh, with one exception, uh, given approval uh, to the uh, architecture and the uh, lighting and landscaping. Uh, the exception is that they weren't really crazy about that window that's, that's staring at us. And they've asked that we uh, will electronically submit uh, some proposed modifications.
Mr. Cohen, did I understand correctly that originally you had just a blank wall, no window? They asked for a window that you did the single window and then they weren't happy with the single window? Was that what they said?
I think there was, uh, my recollection as this, as the design progressed, is that there was a round window there. And uh, this, they weren't happy with that. So the, the architects are going back to their
Okay.
drawing boards and figure out what, what to do. Let's see, the next uh, image, Pat, is elevation uh, from the uh, uh, west of the uh, structure. Again, the lower elevation is uh, shows the existing building in pink. And the upper elevation shows uh, the um, proposed building in uh, blue. Uh, I, I would stop for a minute at this uh, image just to talk a little bit about the height issue. Um, as, as the, the plans disclose, the new building is uh, built further toward the east down as a, a small slope before you reach the pool and tennis complex. Uh, because of that slope, we have uh, had to do a uh, a new average grade plane calculation. The average grade plane calculation, taking into consideration the, the drop uh, in the elevation to the rear of the building uh, has come up with uh, the fact that this building in fact, that every building on this side is taller than they started out with. The, the, the highest building within the, um, or the highest uh, portion of the athletic center is shown with that cupola kind of in the middle of the, of the picture. As you can see, the proposed new gym is lower than the um, the center building. Uh, and uh, the issue is, uh, what do we do about the, the non-conformity? Um, and I believe that um, uh, let me first say that there, there's no way to resolve the problem architecturally and still have a, a building uh, with, with regulation size, uh, uh, basketball court, which is the whole goal of what the school is trying to do. Nor is there any way to raise the average grade plane uh, because of the distances between uh, the rear of the building and the next lower level. There's just not enough room to try to raise the grade plane. So the problem is we have a non-conforming building in the middle that now has become not more non-conforming. And uh, and the new building is also non-conforming from a height point of view. I would ask the commission to, to take note of the provisions of six one forty one that, that I believe allows the commission and grants the commission the power to authorize this non-conformity. And to be specific, I would point out six dash one forty one B uh, two that reads as follows. A non-conforming building other than single family or two family may be altered or permitted to expand. Permitted that such alteration or addition meets the standards for site plan review under section fifteen and further provided that such alteration or expansion shall not increase the degree of non-conformity. And then interestingly enough, this section goes on to define what is meant by this phrase, degree of non-conformity. And a, a degree, the degree of non-conformity is deemed to be increased in three events. One, if it exceeds, it causes the floor area ratio to be exceeded. Two, causes the building coverage to be uh, exceeded or ends up with a, a deficiency in uh, in parking requirements. None of which really applies here. So my view is, as you take a look at this and consider our request for uh, for this uh, approval under site plan approval and special permit, which we're also requesting six dash one forty one permits the commission to accept this kind of unusual and, and strange uh, uh, situation that results in the buildings all getting taller, uh, but not really. The uh, the next image, Pat, if I could?
Hold on a second. Um, let's just stop and um, I, I just want to run through again, your non-conformity, what's going to happen? Is that when you do, when you do the new building, you're going to have another non-conforming height?
Uh, yes.
So we did a funny decision, Mr. Cohen, that we will need to look at again. Which is, it was a non-conforming residence. I believe in the R six. And they were drilling out the basement. And we decided, we ruled that expanding vertically the non-conformity was a form of expansion, the same as a horizontal expansion. And when, so this is very much, I think akin to that, because in the um, this was Palmer, you guys, Cassie Palmer on, is it Prospect? And she was drilling out her basement to get ceiling height. And we ruled that that was an expansion of a non-conformity and denied the application. And that's the one case that I think is relevant to this, because it seems very similar on the facts. Would you be willing to get a variance for this?
Uh, if you disagreed with me, uh, I, I think that's all that we could do. But I would point out in the, in the Palmer case that you mentioned, what, uh, six one forty one B two does not apply to one and two family homes. And so I, I believe we've got a different situation here.
A dwelling, it says a dwelling, it just says a dwelling or an accessory unit in a residential zone. Where are you seeing it doesn't apply to a dwelling?
Look at, look at one forty one B two A.
I am looking at B two A.
Yeah.
Oh, other than single family, maybe altered, but go on reading.
Altered or permitted to expand.
Go on, yeah. But then it says a dwelling or an accessory building in residential zones. Then this is, this is where, and then it's got the sections below that. Let us, I don't know. Does anybody have a quick thought on that? Cause I'm doing this.
Aren't we, aren't we talking about, this all has to do with the use, correct? The, the, the issue with
No, it doesn't. What, the problem that they have here.
Has to do with the expansion of the use. No?
Yeah, it does have to do with the expansion of the use, but the problem that they've got is that they're raising the roof on the gym. And that makes them non-conforming for height, which they hadn't realized because until they did the grade plate calculation, which I think either Patrick or Jody caused that.
A little more nuanced than that, but I'm sure it's not the roof. And this image that we have here is, is helpful. The, the peak of the roof, everything is staying below the highest part of the building. And I, I don't believe that the roof of the existing gym is actually getting taller. It's when it moves laterally and or horizontally in, in the two directions, when it gets larger, the exposure increases and therefore the grade plane, the point of which we measure from um, gets lower, which makes that distance, that length longer. And therefore it, it, it becomes a quote unquote taller building under zoning regulations, even though that point has not changed um, from today. That high point.
Well, the high point, it, the height has changed though, uh, Patrick, I believe because of the, as you point out, the Well, the high point, the, it, the height has changed though, Patrick, I believe because of the, as you point out, the grade has changed.
Right. So I, I would, I would, the way I would describe it is that the bottom has gotten lower, but the, the, the peak of the roof has changed from, from zero or from the, from the current.
But the, but the regulations are, are from the grade. I mean, they're, they're right.
Right. No, you're absolutely right. The way, it, it is, it is, the way we measure height is in that manner. So therefore for zoning purposes, it, it's changed, but I don't, I don't want people to go away thinking that they're building a, 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 a building that is in fact taller than the existing.
Well, no, we can see from this perspective that is on the screen here that it is, it is not taller, but if you were to provide a similar perspective from the rear, it would be taller.
Yeah. Right.
Measured from the lower grade, right?
So I, I think someone asked about options here and, and I, I think one is, Mr., Mr. Cohen made a very nuanced argument and perhaps the zoning enforcement officer could offer a different opinion if, if he was discussed, but I, I've, I've talked with the zoning enforcement officer and I think, I, I think the only way to manage this is, is to, to seek the variance because I don't know another way to interpret it.
Okay, so just, no, can I just, I'm, I'm sorry, Nick, before you ask the, okay, go ahead. I think you'll beat me to it anyway. Go ahead, ask the question. I can remember mine.
So the difference between the existing ridge at one ninety-six and what looks like the grade plane, it's off by about four foot nine. And it seems that the grades around the side and then the back of the building, you know, it's, it's dropping towards the fields in the back. And I'm just wondering if there's any way because it's only four foot nine to manipulate the, the grade around the building itself to accompany, encompass this four foot nine.
So Mr. Cohen already said, okay.
Understanding the length and width of the proposed building. There are some stairs, those kinds of things. It looks like actually even the driveway is being regraded. I think maybe is it an opportunity to go back and look at how, how the the building is sitting on the slopes and how the slopes are being manipulated now is too much of a cut? Could some of it actually be left against the building to actually adjust the grade plane so it, it, it conforms?
Okay. So here's the question, Nick. We have it as one of our objectives mentioned in the P O C D that we don't want people manipulating the grade plane. Okay, number one. I know, but we want to reduce the manipulation of the natural topography. And so that's always our guidepost on that. The other thing is that Mr. Cohen did say, before you asked the question, that they have looked at doing that and didn't see how they could. But I would veer them away from that because it means encouraging someone to continue to destroy the natural topography. Mary has her hand up, Mary?
It's not, that's the whole thing. It's not natural. It's in a slope that, that seems to have been already manipulated to encompass the backs, the backs of the buildings.
We need to ask or engineer that. Okay, Mary, you have your hand up?
Um, yeah, just a couple of quick things. The, the Palmer issue ended up being a non-conformity based on parking, as I recall.
Yes, but we did rule, we did make that decision about the vertical.
Vertical, the vertical. Um, okay.
I remember because we had this whole agonizing discussion about the basement, which was like as about as weird as you can get in a zoning discussion, I think.
I was, I was public commenting on it at the time, so I should probably step down on that.
So, but go ahead and Patrick can clarify for us, but go ahead. What are your thoughts on this, on this issue?
And it, I, I think I agree with Nick that, that it's not like there is an undisturbed area that is being, that is being disturbed in a, in a new way, in a sense. Um, so it seems to me that, that although it's expanding, possibly the F A R non-conformity, the grade plane is already, has already in a sense been disturbed to the extent that there's already building on that grade plane.
Okay. So you would manipulate the grade plane. Now let me go back to Patrick. I'm sorry, were you done, Mary?
No, I was, I was just gonna say, I mean, the variance it seems to me is, is possible. It wouldn't be a hardship since they can't have a building that they are, they are requiring for this particular purpose. Um, that it, it could constitute a hardship. So a, a variance would make sense to me, but again, that's, that's just my opinion.
Patrick, why do you so clear that a variance would be necessary? Cause I haven't talked to you about this before. We never discussed it yesterday. Why are you so clear? Cause that's where I came up, but I want to know what your argument is.
Well, I, I just want to unpack some of the other things said. So I, 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 at the risk of sounding like a, a complete kiss up, I think you're both right with regards to the, the Palmer issue. Uh, I do, I, I think parking and the work being done, the building were part of the non-conformity.
I remembered the parking, but I, the fact that we talked for hours about drilling out the basement was fascinating.
I just wanted, you know, but again, I, I think the factors, as Mr. Cohen said, are a little different here. I also think that what Mr. MacRae is saying is exactly what the P O C D wants to do by, by changing or taking some of the the width, for lack of a better word, in the footprint that could typically that helps to lower the grade plane and make it happen. And I, I did, I did ask the applicant this earlier in the week about, can the footprint of the building shift up into the, the level part of the site and away from the slope and perhaps lower the number that is created by the grade plane and then uh, make this a diminishment or a non, you know, less of a non-conformity. Um, so I'm, I'm hearing from Mr. Cohen that that's not possible right now, but again, after there's other suggestions that we could suggest that haven't been examined and, and maybe he can answer to those.
Okay. And why do you think, why did you suggest the variance? What was?
I, I don't see a way that we can interpret, although I, I, I did hear Mr. Cohen's discussion before and, and I'm, I'm willing to look at it again objectively. I, I don't see a way to interpret that this is a diminishment in the way that we uh, measure things now. And that's, you know, we, I think if without, with, let's just say in, in hypotheticals, if we didn't have a grade plane measurement and we were just talking about the height of the roof from the existing building to any extensions there too. I, I think we would say that, oh yes, this is lower than that and therefore it complies, but we, we again, we, we measure from a point to the peak of the roof and that distance is getting longer. So it's very hard for me to find a way to.
Okay, so your argument, your argument in, in six, one, forty-one B two, A is that it does increase the degree of non-conformity?
I, I think it does right now, but again, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, Mr. Mr. Cohen does bring up, you know, valid point that there are, there are qualifications in there. And if, if there's a way to see around it, but again, I'm, the way that we measure things now and the way we've consistently looked at things is, things is, is to make those distances smaller is the, was the, the easiest way to interpret, you know, uh, not an expansion or increase in the lack of for me.
Okay. All right. I, I would also like time to read, I mean, my favorite thing to read in here is six, one, forty-one. Uh, okay. All right. So.
Remind me, remind me not to bring up a text amendment suggestion to you right now.
Oh my God, I would love to, to change six.
No, you would not.
So hard to follow.
Well, it would, it would make it more clear. It would just add, you know.
More complexity. Okay, Mr. Mr. Low, and then we'll go back to Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I, I'd like to understand about the notion of, of bringing the building forward or maybe it's west, but out from that other, you know, the, the line of buildings there with that would probably, uh, from eyeballing it, disrupt the continuous sort of north, south plane of the other buildings and then impinge upon some playing area, field or, or whatever. Is, is that the reason for not uh, considering that option? That, that's a question for Mr. Cohen.
The, the answer is yes. Uh, i- if you take a look at the, uh, at the site plan, Mr. Low, you'll see that immediately in front of the proposed addition is a, is, is an important part of the school's circulation plan, which we've worked out over the years with, with expert assistance. And we can't, we can't make that go away. It's got to stay as the way it is. So there is no room to do that. And notwithstanding Mr. MacRae's excellent suggestion, we've spent time with Tony DeAndrea about the possibility of raising the, the grade plane, not possible. And so our, our choice really, I think, comes down to uh, the interpretation that I give to one, forty-one, which I hope that you'll consider or, or seeking a variance and hoping that it's granted.
Okay. Well, let's, give us some time. I need time.
I can't, I'm, I'm just looking at this again for the, um, and I can't see. And, and there's no opportunity to spin this on its axis.
Well, if you, if you notice, there's a building right next to it.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I can't see. What is that?
That's the lower school.
That's what I thought.
I mean, they're crowded.
So this is, this is a building footprint here. Um, this is the existing building and, and it's a little, so those are, no, those are good questions. There are, there are limitations and, and I'm aware of it. My, my suggestion, which Mr. Cohen just rightfully pointed out, would affect the circulation loop was to move it, um, this is westward, but, but up on the page. Um, and that would hopefully take it out of the slope a little bit and, and.
All right. So Mr. Cohen, moving you away from zoning per se. Um, could you discuss, did you want to do anything important still in your presentation or could we ask you? Are you going to have any programmatic increases? We know you're not changing enrollment. Are there any programmatic increases associated with this new with this new gym structure that would impact the surrounding neighborhood?
No, not, none at all. And we've submitted a letter from the school to that effect. Same number of ti- teams, same number of kids. Uh, the, 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 the big kids from, uh, the, the sandwich campus don't show up until four thirty in the afternoon. And so that's not been a, a problem. And as you know, uh, Mr. Canning has submitted a, a, a report in accordance with the commission's requirement in two thousand nineteen, when it approved the high school. Uh, we've reached an eighty-five percent capacity at that school. And so we, we have now triggered off, uh, regular reporting by Mr. Kenny who's got himself, I think, a lifetime pension. And, and the, the report that he has submitted and is in your hands indicate that there is no substantial difference between the numbers that he projected in terms of LOS and the various intersections that he examined with what actually has taken place. So we're, we're all happy, happy with that. Uh, in, in addition, we actually did go to wetlands and when wetlands is approved, there is a a couple of small wetlands pockets and not too far away from our proposed project. Uh, we've gotten drainage share report approved by DPW. Um, and, and I, I think anything else that you might wish to raise will, will respond to. The, and Mr. Canning is here tonight as well as Adam Rhodey, the head of the school and Tim Helstein, the, the athletic director. So.
Patrick, Patrick has a question and then I'll go.
Well, this is in the vein of program, but I, 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 I think the commission should get some sense of what the interim plans are. Well, well, the, the old gym is, is gone and the new gym is being built so that we understand those, um, those movements.
Uh, the, the, uh, I'm glad you read that, but, uh, uh, we've been talking with, uh, with our construction manager about that. Uh, it's, it's a tricky piece of construction phasing. And he, uh, they are working on a, a phasing plan right now to keep in mind the school's obligation to the kids and what's going to happen in terms of construction. So we, we will submit that. I'd like to be able to submit that uh, together with the request for zoning permit uh, because it, it may take a while to get that done. But
I, I think.
The school is extremely aware of its obligation to run the athletic program.
Yeah. I mean, if, as long as it's staying on the campus and even if it's extending schedules for, you know, the one season or whatever, I think having that detail is, is critical here. So I, I appreciate that you're working on it.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, uh, I just want to commend the school on the excellent energy narrative that they provided. It looks like you're going to be building an, an all-electric uh, building. You're going to have solar panels on the roof. And there are a number of other energy efficiency, uh, aspects to your project. So thank you very much for that. Uh, I did want to ask, uh, cause there was no comment on EV chargers. And we do have our new, you know, EV charging regulation in effect. Then I was going to ask Mr. Cohen if he thought that applied to this project. And if not, why not?
Well, I think it does apply to the project, uh, but I think it's, uh, the commission has a certain amount of uh, discretion, uh, in that, uh, Mr. Well, uh, let me point out to you a couple of things on EV charging. Uh, to begin with, uh, as, as I think you know, uh, parking for the main campus is provided in a group of, of pods. Uh, let me say it's not one or two big parking lots. They're individual, uh, uh, areas. And Pat, could you pull up, uh, image number, sheet number five? That, that's the, uh, uh, site plan. And I think it shows those parking areas. Yeah, good. Um, the parking area or the pod right next to the athletics, the closest one to what, what we're talking about is right there. And there are sixteen cars there. There are another thirty, four cars a little further over there. Uh, the, they, none of those have EV charging right now. Uh, the school has undertaken a program of installing EV charging stations at this campus and also the across the street at the Schwartz campus where the athletic fields and staff housing is located. And they've done it based really upon uh, their perceived, uh, uh, demand, uh, the needs for it. And they would like to continue to do that, but without a specific number in, in mind, because, um, when you designate an EV station, in effect, you take away a conventional parking lot. And so they would like to be able to install EV charging stations as they've been doing in the past as the, uh, as the demand indicates, they should.
Yeah, if I could finish, uh, a, a, a thought there. And, and that is, because you know, we do, do have regulations and there are targets and I do understand that. And that's why I was going to suggest whatever number we came up with. And I was just roughly coming up with, because your, your traffic study has indicated uh, a hundred and forty-three parking spaces occupied during, I guess, high school time down there. That must've been during a game or something. But twenty percent of that is twenty-eight. And I, this is just me alone. The commission would have to agree and you as well. But my suggestion would be to give you the flexibility, uh, that you're seeking now, just spread it over your entire campus here. So you know, the four oh one old church street campus to Schwartz campus and even the playing fields down, uh, you know, down on the, on the lower property. Cause as you said, the school knows best where the need is. And I would think a lot of it would be needed over on your Schwartz property where you, where you have residents and they can charge overnight. So that would be my suggestion. I don't know how many EV chargers are there now, but and, and I wouldn't make it additive to it. I would say, based on this project, roughly twenty-eight EV chargers. And I'd, I'd love to know, you know, how many are there and what you're thinking of adding.
Uh, I'll, I'll discuss it with the, uh, school, Mr. Wells, but I have a feeling that if they were to, uh, well, I guess it depends on how it's divided up. But they may very well be concerned about eliminating that many conventional spaces uh, at, at one time. Maybe, you know, over a period of time. I, I don't know. Let, let me speak to them about that.
Uh, Mr. Cohen. The way, the way, the way to handle that, if I could finish, Mr. MacRae.
Yeah, go ahead.
Would be to, uh, you know, not restrict it to, uh, electric vehicles, you know, sort of first come, first served.
I thought, I thought that's, uh, the way that the regulation, I don't know if it states in the regulation, but it's not a, a. it's not a a a uh accessible space. It's just a parking space that just happens to have a charger there. So if I show up and all of the parking is taken except for an EV charger space, I can park there with my my tank if I want. It's it's not an issue. It just happens to be, yeah, it just happens to be an EV space. Well, you know, there it is.
Yeah, I just also want to remind everybody that we're I just want to say we are asking you for a stretch in this, Mr. Cohen, because if you look at the exact wording of the rag, it is the addition of new spaces. So it is new spaces that would require the implementing of the EV unless someone changed it.
No, it says major renovation.
Yes.
Of a private school building. Well, it's a major renovation, isn't it?
Um, hmm, I don't know if I would go that far. You're
Well, I would, because it was eight thousand. Now it's ten thousand. The thing's being torn down. I don't know.
But the impact, well, the impact on your overall overall FAR is actually their overall um square footage is going down. And if you look at what you're changing in terms of total square footage on site. Um, I'm not going to be able to do this from the top of my head. I got to look up the numbers. Unless, Mr. Cohen, do you remember how many square feet you add?
I think it's net two thousand.
Yeah. And then so that's my question. You've got this big campus. And you're remodeling one building. I wouldn't say that that stretches it to remodeling on the other camp, to doing EV on the other campuses. I mean, I'd love to see people do more EV, but I also don't want to ask them for more than is specific. So
Don't we have to ask the question, what is the the the, not just the letter, but the spirit of the uh
Well, the the spirit of the regulation and our interpretation of it. So there's the question. We interpret our regs. So what they're doing is they're starting out with total gross floor area of two hundred and forty thousand square feet on this campus. And they are adding to this gym. They are adding eight thousand square feet. So how major is it that you're adding to? So I I so an interpreter, so we are the interpreter of our regulation, but we can't say well, ignore the words because our spirit is we want to be more environmental. I would leave it to the school, actually, because this school has made every effort to be environmentally responsible. And I think if we lay the question out the way Mr. Wells just did, let's see what they come back that they think is reasonable for them, because I I have every confidence that they are going to move forward as much as they can environmentally.
That's fine with me, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Cohen. So we did that. I want to come back to the NCAA thing. Which we hadn't really talked about. You are not, you're going to this regulation size court, which is really cool. NCAA, and I don't really understand very much about these things, but just tell me, you're assuring me and we can condition it that that does not mean you will have other teams from somewhere else or um tournaments that you would not have normally had.
Well, there are in interscholastic games, but they
New incremental. I'm looking at incremental use only.
There should be no incremental use
Okay.
According to the commitment that the the school has made.
Perfect. So this wowee zowee, we now have an NCAA court is not going to say, oh, let's have the nationals here.
No, they're not planning to do that.
Okay, all right, cool. Um, that was my last, I think, yesterday, Arn asked a question. Um
Right.
You you are going to have the camps and you are going to continue having camps in the summer, and you would utilize this building when you figure out how you're going to do your staging. But all the previous not-for-profit use, you remove, the school removed them for the last application, as we remembered, in order to manage the traffic flow, correct?
Uh, I it it is correct, yes. I I inquired of the athletic director if there are any non-school activities. And he said that uh he told me that uh there there are some after hours, and I mean really after hours, like evening uh games that uh or or practice sessions that their coaches uh run, but it it's school related in the sense that it's done by their coaches and nothing during school hours.
So I think if what would help us then is if if we just have any change you've had since the application that we approved, was it when we did the high school? And the high school was coming down here? And whether there's any more practice sessions that have been added, because if you're doing evenings, you've added those practice sessions at a time when there's no traffic anyway, so you should be fine. I mean, I'm sure it hasn't impacted.
And that's what's going on, but we can get you something.
Yeah. So if you would just give us something that updates and said, okay, so when we did the high school, this is what we said is was the program, and we've added four practice sessions a week. But they're at seven thirty when rush hour is over, and we've seen they don't impact. It's ten kids who take the bus or whatever happens and just tell us that. Okay, anybody else from the commission have questions? All right, uh, Mr. Cohen, did you feel like we gave you every opportunity to speak? Because we do interrupt. Oh, good. All right. Okay, so I'm going to turn to public comment if that's okay. Um, we have uh once again, um, Ms. Fesuliotis. And I'm going to promote you. And we're going to, I'll tell her when she comes in.
I just promoted her, so.
Oh, I hope, well, she got in anyway, in spite of my trying to promote her at the same time. So sometimes we bump each other.
Thank you. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I'm very supportive of this structure, and I agree with Country Day's commitment to athletics for their students, but I do worry about program creep, because we do see it with the with the private schools in the area that I live in. Um, you will have an NCAA regulation basketball court, and I do support that there be restrictions on athletic events that are not part of the school program, such as collegiate national basketball games or tournaments. I also support anything that can restrict uh traffic uh to off-hours, but also recognizing that when you have increased traffic for uh these events, that there be some sort of traffic control that's required. Um, because it can get pretty sticky. Although, again, Country Day has been great about getting traffic off the road. So I just wanted to reiterate that.
I remember when we did the traffic when we changed, sorry, because I shouldn't interrupt you in in your two minutes. Go ahead, Ms. Fesuliotis.
That's okay. But but, you know, again, I think that uh Country Day has been very good neighbors. Um and, you know, again, my interest is only because my my parents live down the street on Porcinage, um, and we traverse that road all the time. And uh compared to other private schools, um, they've done a great job in in um allowing neighbors to to have input and to uh understand the dynamics of the neighborhood. So I thank them very much for it. But I would support any any restrictions you can um so that there won't be program creep um um and uh which seems to happen um a lot. So thank you.
It's no, it's human nature. It's always pushes the envelope. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Uh, our next speaker is Mr. Rhodey. He's not really he's not really a member of the public.
He's a neighbor.
Oh, he's going to speak as a neighbor? Will he protest the school? All right, here he comes. All right, Mr. Rhodey, if you would unmute, you just muted. Unmute. There he goes.
Thank you, um, Madam Chairperson and everybody. I am a neighbor for uh ten Old Church Road right across the street. I have a lot of opposition to this whole thing that I want to talk to you about. Um, no, I just wanted to just go on the record and just say the same program that we've run last year and the same program that we ran the year before is the program that we're going to run next year and the year after and the year after. There's no um in in incremental creep that is in any plans. No NCAA tournament games are going to happen there. Um, and I would just uh note that the only things that are happening sort of late, um we we have some programming with like Ablest, where uh fifteen kids from Ablest come and they work with our students. Uh, that happens six at night. Um, for an hour, we play music and and we teach them basketball and things like that. Um, so aside from that, there's been no other change in program. And we just wanted to uh make sure you had that on the record.
Great, thank you. Um, Ms. Fesuliotis, when she was speaking, mentioned uh, I remember when the application came in for the first, it was one of the first projects at four oh one. And the traffic was sort of oozing, all the cars were oozing all over the place at the time. And indeed, you all have done a very good job of getting those cars off of Fairfield Road, those queues. I remember they used to run up Old Church to Fairfield. And that has really changed. So um, I hope you're able to keep it up. Um, anybody have any questions for Mr. Brody? Alrighty. Um, oh, Mr. Brody, do you want to comment on your EV? Or do you want to think about it?
Yeah, I I I would. I mean, uh, and to uh Mr. Wells' um point, um, we consider ourselves to be sort of am among the best stewards of the environment around. Um, we'll continue to do that, building net zero buildings, more um photo takes on on the roofs. Um, really uh smart design in terms of the materials and repurposing of materials. I mean, we're well past LEED certification on all the buildings that that we've since built. Um we want to be smart about the EVs and um we will absolutely put some in. And, you know, we think that the parking lot just to the uh north of our building, which has sixteen spots, we're happy to do twenty percent there. And we are going to continue to roll out the chargers. What we don't want to do is put chargers in places where they're never going to be used um and just incur the cost and and the, you know, the the trenching to get to the chargers. And and there's a power drain as well, which doesn't really work if if they're not being used. So we're trying to be very thoughtful about that um as we go forward. And, you know, you have our word just because we want to be great stewards of the environment. We think it's a great teaching tool for children. Um, which is why we will continue to push to be one of the more aggressive schools i- in the northeast about how we think about um our our sustainability footprint.
Great, thank you very much. No more questions from him? Any other questions from the public? Um, all right, okay, thank you very much, Mr. Rhodey. I'm going to go ahead and remove you since you probably want to hang out. Uh, okay, um I I think the best thing to do, as you would have expected, Mr. Cohen, is uh let's leave this open. Have the commission, have the commission think about the one forty-one issue. And individually, the commission can let Patrick know their thoughts. And that would give him the opportunity to give you some guidance in the next twenty-four, thirty-six hours. Unless people, because I think we just need to absorb one forty-one. Again, I always have to reread it uh myself. So I'd like the time Ms. Jenkins is nodding yes, and you know, we respect our attorneys. So um we'll let Ms. Jenkins have and and then we'll try to give you some guidance immediately so you know. But you might want to do a placeholder with the ZBA already. Because I was thinking one advantage to you is if you went to the ZBA, you could get the campus done, one and done. That you have an inherent hardship that has evolved as we changed. I believe part of this is because far changed to the Great Plain regs. Is that true, maybe?
I I would, I would agree that the way that we measure things has obviously evolved over time. And these buildings at one point were in compliance. And um, you know, perhaps could have been manipulated or shown to be a decrease, but the way that we we figure, you know, what how we start from zero is now uh evolved. So
And then you're done with the issue. Then you can work within that original context for the and then you're not a that you've got a variance and you no longer have a problem with non-conforming, and you can continue to work it within that frame of your height. I mean, it seems like a good practical solution for the long term. If you could do it. So maybe explore that with Patrick.
Will do.
Okay. Great. So we'll see you where and we see you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So this application is being continued, as they like to say. All right. Uh, last application in the public hearing, Mr. Basili, if you're paying attention, is Summit Avenue Railroad LLC, because nobody's hungry, right? You want to finish?
Are we going to just march? Are we going to march right through these?
Your call. You got two more applications. One of them may have significant public comment.
Yeah, it it seems like we um it seems like I'll defer to the to others, but it seems like uh at least one of these applications could go on a while.
Okay, what do you guys want to do? I'm happy. Want to do fifteen?
Uh, I'm good for marking right on through, but it's up to you guys, whatever you're going to do.
I got a yes from Patrick, a yes from Lo. Anybody else?
I'm not a voting member of this commission, so.
Yeah, but you're a human who might have to use the facilities.
Thank you. Thank you for acknowledging, Madam Chair.
So, you know, we we voting member doesn't really matter as much as, hey, how you feeling? Um Okay, is everybody okay with taking a fifteen? Except for Nick, because he's tough.
It is what it is.
Sure. No, I want to, I want to keep going. We'll see how long fifteen goes. I'm back, by the way. Thank you.
Well, we've extended.
We miss you, Dennis.
You know, Dennis, before you were on the school building committee, we liked you so much more. I just want you to know that.
There is a, there's definitely a mood change when you get on one of these building committees.
I know. Okay, wait, wait. Okay, we're wasting
Let's keep going. Let's keep going.
No, 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 we got a whole bunch of modes. Yeah, fifteen minutes real fast. Come on. I think they've got a couple of people who really want to have to feed the dogs.
What happened? We taking a break? No!
Sorry, you were overruled.
No way. What time is it?
It's seven thirty right now, seven twenty-five.
Dennis, when the dogs have to be fed, the dogs have to be fed. And I'm sorry, Mr. Basili, that we had a break right before the last item, but we just, we pooped out.
Um, that's quite all right. I I never refused a break in my whole life.
Yeah. You saw one crazy commissioner did. Wait a minute. Um, actually, Dennis has completely disappeared.
You just talked to him, I thought.
Yeah, but he's gone for the screen.
Oh, he's back into the room here.
Oh, there he is. Okay. There he is. Okay, he must have just lost the connection when he was
Let's give him a chance to, let's give him a chance to explain himself.
Okay, explain yourself. Mr. Jeski, explain yourself.
Are we onwards a meeting or what?
Yes, we're we're on with the meeting. We're all less, a little more happy now that we got to we were that we got to um use the facilities and grab a snack. Okay, our next item is application number, yeah, we're recording. Application number fourteen, Summit Avenue Railroad LLC, final site plan and special permit at two eighty Railroad Avenue. Uh, Mr. Hasland, welcome. I believe that you have resolved everything.
Uh, good evening, Chip Haslam for the applicant. Um, yes, I believe I have too. You heard this pre-application in uh March. And as you know, it relates to uh improvements to the exterior of the buildings, which result in three buildings, which results in one building, which is the subject of this application at night, two eighty, and gain increase of two hundred and four square feet. It's really just because of change to a roof and the um uh addition of new windows and the way they uh conform to the uh rear footage inside. The staff notes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm really looking forward to this building being updated. I think it'll be really refreshing change along there. Um
I thought the staff notes are very complete. Thank you, Deputy Director. I thought that uh part of comments were all good. And uh you didn't seem to have a lot of questions at the briefing yesterday. I do have David Ball, the architect, with me if you have questions, but um I'm hoping that this can be a quick one for you tonight and we can get your approval.
So we're um So we're, from what I, the only thing that we have noted from the Deputy Director is that you are, that there is, you're going to go back to ARC with the signage program and anything else that's outstanding, as if you're going to change lights or anything. And that the ARC was, you've been there. I think you were there more than once, right? And they were satisfied. And that's all I'm seeing that you have opened. Does any member from the commission have questions?
Not a question, but big cadews for your landscape plan.
Ooh, good.
It seems that there's street trees and trees in the back and trees where there must have been a tree at some time and now it's gone. So thank you very much for actually kind of thinking this is, I think, the time and effort being put into the buildings is now reflected in time and effort putting into the landscape.
So what do you want to do with that, Nick? Have it conditioned that we would have staff review?
Nope. I think the landscape plan as they have proposed, that's, that's what they're giving us. That's what they plan. Because it's, there's no street trees and they're putting in, you know, six, seven, eight street trees. That's, that's a big thing from Greenscape Committee.
Sorry. Windows open. Okay, so Nick is happy with the landscape plan. Any other questions or comments from the commission? No. Alrighty. Any questions or comments from a member of the public on two eighty Railroad Avenue? Please raise your virtual hand. No comments from the public. Does the commission have any objections to closing this application at this time?
No.
Hearing no objections, this application is hereby closed. Mr. Hasland, it has been a pleasure having this extended conversation with you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Basili, you can go home now.
Yes, I'll do that.
Bye-bye. Nice seeing you.
A nice night. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right. So we continue now with the regular meeting. Our next application on the regular meeting is Greenwich Academy, Inc., with a pre-application review to propose a trial busing program in order to accommodate proposed additional enrollment of up to a hundred new students, which we understand to be up to ten percent of the existing student base. And with that, oh, I'm sorry, I kicked you out and I had forgotten you were on this. And hello, hello, everybody. All right, Mr. Hasland, you heard us yesterday, right?
I did. And I've got my team with me to aid in this discussion with the commission. If you could promote Molly King, the head of school, and Andrea Sabatana.
Actually, we have John Canning and Molly, but we don't have, and Ms. King, sorry, but we don't have Andreas. Andreas, I see you. Okay. Oh, he's in. All right.
This is Shay, Andreas. She's the CFO.
Andrea, okay.
And Eric Brown, who's a land use consultant, also working on the team.
Eric Brown. Raise your virtual hand. Brower. Oh, I don't know. Got him. I see him. All right. That's a big team.
Well, we've been working on this for a while and it'd be better to get in and speak to you sooner rather than later.
In the end, you were right. I was wondering why, and I started out that way. And the commission, the rest of the commission totally convinced me that this was the right thing to do. So away you go.
Good. Thanks. Molly has some introductory remarks to make and that's that she made them now that you've indicated that you're okay with us going forward with the pre-app at this point. And then we'll talk about the substance of it. But we've been at this for about six, seven months now of actively looking at what we could do to make changes either to the academy's campus or to the way we transport our students such that we might get relief from the twenty-three-year-old enrollment cap that was put in place in two thousand. And which really, as reading the transcript makes clear, it was really traffic that was the issue of at that time and putting the cap on the property. So we recognize that that will be the big issue if we come in the fall seeking relief from that cap from you. And therefore, we're working hard and coming up with a busing plan for this fall. Where we will do a trial busing plan to get the commitment from the community and invest a lot of time and money and effort into this to use the buses that we're proposing so that we can hopefully reduce the amount of traffic coming to the GA campus on North Maple on a daily basis. And hopefully, in a manner that's sufficient for you to give us some relief to some number which we don't know of yet. We want to see what the data bears out after we've done this initial trial busing program. And if it works, so much the better, and we will fully implement it and keep it going forever. But for the moment, I've asked that Molly be recognized. And by the way, Molly is retiring, as you probably all know from GA, very soon. And so this may be the last time that she appears in front of you. We shall see. Molly.
Thank you, Chip, and thank you all. And I apologize for my voice. I'm suffering from some allergies. But yes, I started my nineteen-year tenure in planning and zoning meetings in July of two thousand and four. And we're back again. And I just wanted to provide you all a little bit of context for what we're doing. It's been reported and certainly we've been down to town halls, spoken to Pat, spoken to Fred about our plans to acquire this fifty-four acre parcel from Indian Springs Land Company. And then we'll be hopefully, oh, go ahead, Mer, and Ms.
I just want to say, because I want the commission to hear this. I'm assuming that you all are okay that this is going to be longer than a twenty-minute discussion. It is an important discussion and I think we should explore it thoroughly and hear the whole thing. So we're not going to go, I'm going to, I would like to be able to extend the time we normally grant a pre-app. Are you guys okay with that?
Sure. Yes, of course.
No, not, not, not you guys. I'm talking to the commission because they got upset that we were going to, you know, we were having eight-hour, ten-hour meetings all the time. So.
Yeah, Chip, this is, this is for the people who aren't getting paid.
So pre-apps, we've been, we've been strict with pre-apps the last month to keep them to twenty minutes. But this is a really big discussion, I think.
We got it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Ms. King. I'm sorry for the apology.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So as, as part of the diligence process, we're engaging in kind of a full campus plan around the property. And we're really looking forward to having that to advance a number of our goals around sustainability, outdoor education, targeted athletic facilities, faculty housing, among other things. And as well as part of that, then, as Mr. Haslam was describing, we're seeking incremental flexibility on the enrollment cap on our main campus. And, and what this does is it helps us respond to a very strong demand in terms of admissions, one that we're not able to meet. Things where that interest really spiked during COVID from both New York and very much from local families. We have not seen that diminish at all. Very much aligned with other private schools, Greenwich Country Day, Brunswick, that have been in growth mode. For a little bit of drill down context on the importance of maintaining growth in our upper school, all of our core academic classes in the upper school are coeducational with Brunswick, everything but math. So that gender parity in those classes is a, is an educational priority right now. That delta, that gap is eighty-five students in our upper school. One of the things that's changed historically, even since my arrival nineteen years ago, not just at Greenwich Academy, but I think in the town, is that many more students used to leave for boarding schools. That number has diminished significantly. So just to, again, set that in context for you, we currently have sixty-five students in our eighth grade. Only two are going to boarding school, one for family tradition, one to a specialized hockey boarding school. So all the rest will come up. We'll move from sixty-five to eighty-seven in the ninth grade. So we do take in a chunk of the class. And then also, I would just add, any increase that we are seeking would be incremental. We're looking for up to a hundred students, but not phased in immediately. This would be over a four-year period. And as Mr. Hasland describes, and I think we can provide you more detail, we've rolled out a really aggressive transportation initiative in order to get out in front of this, lower the number of cars in the neighborhood and coming onto campus so that we could then return to planning and zoning in the fall. So I'll, I'll hand it back to you, Mr. Hasland, and then to Andrea Sabatana.
Thank you. One of the things we did was we retained Kimley Horn several months ago to study what the current conditions were. And so that's why John Kane's on the school too. And also just to see how that compared to the situation in two thousand when this cap was put on. And what John found was that basically there's been no increase in the amount of traffic that's generated by GA from in the twenty-three-year period. It stayed static. Well, what has happened is that there's traffic from other sources which have been introduced into the intersections, particularly the one at North Street, Patterson and North Maple. Over that, those years, which we can't do much about, certainly not on our campus because we looked at various things we could do on campus to maybe reduce the amount of generation. But there's really nothing more we can do on the campus itself. It's really off-campus. So we came to the conclusion that busing was probably the one big thing we could undertake to try to reduce the amount of traffic being generated by GA in this area and therefore reduce the impact on the neighborhood generally in the downtown area. There was, and we will implement, a suggestion from Kimley Horn that we move our seventh and eighth grade drop-off and pickup to the lower school campus from the upper school campus, which would give us a little breathing room in allowing more upper school students to attend GA. And we will implement that no matter what. But really, the busing, it became clear that that was really the thing that we do would have the most impact, positive impact on the situation. So we've committed to doing this and we committed to starting it this fall. I'll talk a little bit more about reaching out to parents and about the plan itself. But it's going to be a tremendous commitment on the part of the community to this. And certainly the administrative staff is, is committed to it. And then our intent is to come back to you in the fall, late fall, after we have some data come in and make an application to you for some relief from the cap and then start the discussion again. And hopefully, we'll have numbers that will be supportive of the idea that the commission is in a good standing to give some relief. Although, as I said, we don't know what that will be yet until we see the numbers. But we wanted to tell you before we undertook this program that this is what we are doing and why we are doing it and to get you engaged, as I said, sooner rather than later. So Andrew, you want to talk a little bit about the program and the reach-up?
Sure. Thanks so much, Chip. I'm Andrea Sabatana. I'm the CFO of Greenwich Academy. And I've been working with the team here for the past few months on this initiative. We are planning on launching a greatly expanded shuttle busing effort for our students in the Greenwich area and a few other key locations outside of Greenwich where many of our students reside. Just so the committee has a background, sixty-six percent of our students reside in Greenwich. The cost would be included in the cost of tuition to make it attractive to families in the past. This has been a significant added cost for families, which did serve as a deterrent for some. So we're going to include it in our overall cost of tuition. We plan to focus on very convenient routes with shortened timeframes with one to two stops each. Based on feedback from families, convenience is key and will not be making more than three stops per bus. It makes the pickup times too early for many families. This program is consistent with our strategic goal of increasing our focus on environmental sustainability as well. You know, right now, a lot of our families transport their kids in one car and really hoping to get many kids on the bus from the same neighborhoods. In addition, bus ridership has proven benefits to students, increased independence, as well as building a sense of community. Many people who take the bus and students who take the bus or take our existing buses love it and we hear that often. We just surveyed our community over the past several weeks on this proposed initiative and we received over three hundred and twenty responses, which we thought was a really great result. More than two hundred expressed a desire to ride the bus on several of the stops that we proposed. Priority would be given to those who plan to ride the bus every day. So making sure that they're going to be riding it consistently. And based on the results, we would plan to add stops in Old Greenwich, Riverside, Lenville, near Bell Haven, probably Sandwich Road, North Street, Rye, and also a location near the Merritt on the Stamford-New Kenan border. Most of these stops will likely be at churches who do not have any traffic during this time. And we've had success with those stops in the past. There would be in addition to our existing three bus routes along ninety-five, which we have one coming from Darien Stamford, Bridgeport and the Bronx. So these results really show a significant increase in interest compared to our existing ridership of about seventy students who currently come in on the bus. Forty-five of these ride on GA buses and thirty-five on town buses with the largest ridership coming from the Westchester area in terms of the town buses. Not many ride on the Greenwich Town routes because they've become increasingly inconvenient when they consolidated them. And the pickup times for somebody traveling a mile or so can, can be really, really early in the morning. So on our GA routes, we would be tripling our number of bus routes from three to nine and increasing our overall capacity by more than triple. We have had several conversations with TAG, the Transportation Association of Greenwich. They're a local nonprofit who's been providing transportation services in Greenwich for close to forty years. Our pickup and drop-off times work very well for them with their existing schedule. And they're able to provide us with five twenty to twenty-five person buses for this purpose. So these buses, again, would just stop, make probably one stop in Riverside, come directly to GA, depending on the demand, or they potentially may make two stops. And then come, come right to the school. And we've really been talking to all of the folks here, our Sustainability Club, the Parents Association, the girls themselves, to really launch a strong effort and, you know, focus on its benefits in terms of sustainability, community and convenience. Other fun things we've talked about is offering, you know, treats on the bus to make sure people remain interested, tracking our, our progress against overall sustainability goals, neighborhood captains to promote the ridership and student incentives. So there has been a lot of excitement internally about the program that we plan for a full launch at the start of the next school year, this coming fall.
I should say too, we did have a meeting with neighbors at the school a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago. I think maybe ten showed up and we had a very cordial discussion, I thought. And hopefully, we were informative for them. And we expect that we will continue to have engagement from the neighbors with this proposal. But at the end of the day, what we'd like to be able to show is that we will not add to any problem in this neighborhood by way of increasing student enrollment. And if we were to do that, we would not be making the request of the commission for relief from the cap. So we, that's, that's a definitive that we've promised.
All right. Any questions so far from the commission?
It's a.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. I'm Low, then Nick, and then it, Arnis smiling, so we're going to give him the next. Okay. Peter Lo.
It is one of the goals to, not just to test the viability here, but sort of the reception on the part of the student body and their, and the parents to this concept. And so that it might, you might anticipate some expansion of this. Again, to mitigate the existing issues, which you all have obviously recognized, that have increased over time. So, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking this is probably not just a targeted, oh, we've got another, we expect another hundred students, so we've got to do something about the traffic occasion by their presence. Is that, I mean, is, is part of this study to look at the sort of internal acceptability of this concept and whether people are truly buying off on it? And particularly older kids, I would think.
Yes, you hit the nail on the head, Mr. Low. And this is why we decided to do it as we're doing it and come to you with this pre-app now too. Is that rather than saying, our traffic engineer says if we add six buses, basically, we can have a hundred more kids. So we're asking commission right now for, to get relief from the enrollment cap that was put on twenty-three years ago. Instead, we're saying, no, we're going to institute this. We're going to see what kind of response. No, we're going to institute this, we're gonna see what kind of response we get and what it justifies on way of asking a uh for relief from the cap. From you folks down the road. So we do want to see what the commitment's gonna be like. We do want to see um how much our activities and our encouragement w- will lead to success. And uh so yeah, we're committed to it, but the idea is let's prove it first before we make um a a an ask of the commission.
But but to also mitigate the existing issue, it's not just to address the increase. Is of what I'm saying, and and Ms. King, you're, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna underscore your point. Um there's there's a real appetite for it right now and quite honestly. Um this is a reset from COVID too, because unfortunately, you know, we couldn't um really push our push our um busing initiatives. During the pandemic, um we were returning to cars individually, but there is a a big appetite from the community right now. And um from the students themselves as part of not just sustainability, but community, really really reclaiming. Community. So um we we were delighted with the response, n- not surprised. And the community hasn't really heard it in terms of, oh yes, and we're gonna be, you know, um increasing enrollment incrementally. Uh and not that we've hid it from him, it it's just that the appetite that they have. Um is to make things um more convenient, more community building to support sustainability.
Quick, quick follow-on question uh and uh of the roughly a third of the students that are not characterized as local. What what sort of um. You know, benefit or progress you you see being made toward addressing their communication, uh their uh conveyance needs, if you will, to.
Actually, Mr. Low, that's where we've been the most successful. So we have transportation currently from Bridgeport and the Bronx. Um every day and from Westchester, from the Stanford train station, from the Greenwich train station. So. We we've had um good success um from our um from our out-of-towners uh as a matter of of convenience and community.
And and as part of that, we're pre- planning on adding a stop in Rye and then a stop right off the Merritt, which many of our families actually asked.
No, I heard that, yep.
Yeah, which I think we'll we'll get a lot of interest, that's gonna be, you know, an another twenty-five passenger um bus. So I think I think that'll be successful.
Mr. McRae.
Uh Mr. Haslam, what is our cap now? Like nine hundred?
Seven thirty plus a two percent uh increase of need be. Yep.
Plus or minus two percent, okay.
Right.
How full of it are the buses that actually uh pick up now? Are they completely filled when they get to the school or? It's just a few kids?
We have seventy people on our buses, the Bridgeport and the Bronx run are pretty full. Um. And and our Darien Stamford run um is not as full. That's that's right off ninety-five.
Okay.
Again, we are charging for these buses um quite a bit, so we would be pivoting and making them. Part of the overall cost of tuition, which I think will also.
Right, so under- understanding that if that was implemented and um. I don't know what kind of uh uh prohibitions you have on students driving. Uh maybe that would that actually go uh a long way to what you're trying to do here?
Seniors.
Seniors are allowed to drive.
Only seniors, okay? And how many would be in that class?
Uh typically, we just graduated eighty-six. Um the other thing is the tag buses are um smaller, so Andrea, am I right that they can go um on the Merritt?
No, they can't, no.
Oh, they can't either, okay, but they're smaller, more nimble.
But and they're not, they're not completely filled. Um so many are not completely filled.
Now, right now, we have one big seventy-one passenger bus, that's the one that's not full. And then the Bridgeport and the Bronx are are much smaller, there are fourteen passenger buses and the and those are nearly full.
Okay. Um one of the statements in uh the the April eighteenth letter was uh the current enrollment cap was imposed two thousand. Recent completed traffic study in January of twenty-three shows Greenwich Academy's traffic flow has remained stable over the last twenty-three years. Um as I read that, I would say that's because there is a cap that was imposed in two thousand. And the cap was imposed to create this stable traffic. And uh you not not increase the the traffic around uh the campus. So it seems to me. That cap that we imposed way back when actually is working and working the way it was intended. Um I just wanna kind of point that out, so. Um so Mr. Haslam, if if we you were gonna do this. Um I I would sus- suspect we would wanna put a a a very hard stop on it. You know, a a specific date, is that was something you'd be looking for?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
And so if you were doing something in the fall as a study, uh uh you know, the aggressive study. Okay, and I'm saying, okay, so as of uh your first day of school, you can actually. Take a look at what's going on with some of the busing and so on and so forth as you intended, and then at the end of October, it stops.
Right.
Is that, how is this intended to work or do you have a different idea?
No, we would run it for the year.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question, yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna run it for a year, so aggressive busing for a year. Uh ten percent or up to a hundred students for a year. So here we are, um you do it in September, we're back now in June. And we find out, yep, the whole thing doesn't work. So what do we do?
No, we're not asking for immediate implementation of um an increase in the enrollment of a hundred students, that's not what we're asking for. We're gonna put the program into effect in the fall of twenty twenty-three. We would not be adding to enrollment until the fall of twenty twenty-four if and when it's granted or permitted by the commission. So we're doing our s- our program first, then our study or the study will go along with the program and then we'll come back to the commission. We're hoping in late fall of uh this year to to see what our data shows and to see if it supports, and we hope it does. Some relief from the cap, we just don't know what it's gonna support yet until we do it. But to your question about are we committing to this program for um just a two-month period, no, we are committing to the program for the next academic year.
Okay, so it would be the, as you were saying in your letter, uh an aggressive trial busing program for a year. And there's no increase or anything, you're just getting the data on the uh how it's going. It it seems.
Well, no, we'd be coming back to the commission in the late fall because we have to, there's uh do our um enrollment. Um and in the uh early spring or late winter, I guess, early spring of twenty twenty-four, is that right, Molly?
Yeah, the the um admissions application deadlines are actually early December and we make decisions in February. Uh so um we we would wanna be back in the fall. Um because if we were, if there were gonna be any kind of incremental increase for fall of twenty-four. We would need to be accounting for that um in the admission process.
In February, right, making that decision in February.
Correct, correct. But the commitment is is multi-year, it's not gonna be a one-year busing commitment, this this.
Okay, that was, I think that's what they were trying to get to.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, absolutely. No, this is not a one-year busing commitment, we are absolutely. Because this is aligned with our sustainability goals as well. So a- absolutely, this is seen to be on a go-forward basis. Sorry, that wasn't clear.
Mr. Wells?
I like Mr. McRae, I have a number of questions. So just wanna confirm, your current cap is seven thirty? Is that right?
Yeah, seven thirty with a uh two percent.
Seven thirty, I'm sorry, two percent, yep.
Okay, so so if you went up a hundred, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, that's on our main campus, we have another cap for Ridgeview.
Right, that's where the numbers weren't making sense for a sec, okay.
Okay, I I get it. So so how many students are at the other campus?
Seventy.
Seventy, Andrea, and I think the cap is seventy-four there, Mr. Wells.
Okay, so roughly eight hundred going up, potentially going up a hundred, which would be, I don't know, around twelve percent or so. Okay, and you have the classroom facilities currently to handle a hundred additional students?
I- in the upper school, this is where, um this is why I mentioned the acquisition. Um of the Rockefeller land because essentially, and we actually did this um during COVID to stay open, we can redeploy. Um spaces that are currently athletic spaces um and art spaces on the main campus. Um a- as we seek to build targeted facilities um a- at the Glenville property.
Right, and uh so of your of your busing plan is fully rolled out, if the all buses were full. How many students would be on them? So just tr- trying to get a feel for, you know, the the delta. Currently, you have what, seventy students on the buses and. Uh the the plan you're rolling out, how many total students would be on the buses if all the seats were taken?
Full, uh around two hundred and forty, I believe.
Okay, so that's a good number.
Yeah, sky's the limit, though, I mean, that's, we wanna keep this moving.
Yeah, uh another question, uh given your commitment to sustainability, are you exploring using electric buses?
We have not yet, but uh obviously that's some a longer-term goal.
Okay, and then uh just two more quick questions. Uh as you know better than I do, in your high school, there are a number of programs that start really early, acapella. And then if you're in a play, you may be there until eight or nine. What about those students who, you know? How are they gonna get home? How how late are you gonna run your buses to accommodate them, or maybe you're not, I don't know?
Well, we will have one, we will have one bus run and then we always have a late bus run uh to the various train stations. But in general, the traffic at that time is not as bad because the dismissals are so staggered, it doesn't really create any sort of backup.
The last bus is at six PM, but as Andrea said, it's so staggered in the afternoon. We just don't, we don't run into the same issues.
Right, the final question, given that your senior class can drive to school. Are you gonna give them incentives to give up their cars and to ride the buses? Since they're they're your leadership and it'd be great if they could accept set an example for the the rest of the school.
Uh it uh we 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 agree with you. Um we may need to come up with more than just giving them snacks. But the the their leadership aspirations are high. And the student involvement, I mean, that's where you want the agency to be. And the growth um both for lower middle, well, for all three, lower, middle and upper school in the Sustainability Club student-led initiatives. That's frankly where it's most successful, so you're absolutely right.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Yaski.
Yeah, I I guess um let me bring the the discussion up a little bit. I'd be really interested, maybe this is a question for your traffic engineer, but. This is not a novel idea, there's a bunch of other schools that have tried this all around the country and in fact in Connecticut. Have you guys been in close coordination with them? What's been their success? What are some of the issues they bump into?
Right.
Um and you know, are there things that they can, you know, lessons learned, that kind of a an idea?
We have talked to some, our admissions director um came from Seattle Country Day and they launched a very similar uh busing program. Obviously, it's a more dense area, but a lot of the things that worked were um, you know, offering it for free, I think was a. You know, or included in the overall cost of tuition. Um getting the students involved uh was really is really key as well. Um promoting the program in, you know, in all ways you can with the Parents Association Sustainability Club. Um I think those were the the key points.
How about the traffic engineer, is he on on the line?
Yes, he is.
No.
Uh I can hear you, I can hear you, he's here, but his his sound is not good. Cause he's only an engineer.
Be careful, be careful.
Is that better?
Better than, never mind, never mind.
Yes, that's better than whatever I am, okay. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Kenning, try again.
So um we have had some some experience with the Safe Routes to School program here in Westchester, but I think the biggest lesson learned. Was when the school consolidated their bus routes, so their bus routes used to be reasonably okay, and then they consolidated them. And now it's like doing a squiggly map drawing on Greenwich and it takes you an hour to get to school from two miles away. And as soon as the town did that, ridership on the buses just fell off a cliff, it dropped by probably forty-five percent. So they, I mean, the the there's several elements to be key, it has to be convenient, which means not a lot of stops. It has to be something that's good for the community, it has to be something that's good for the environment, a- a- and it, you know, has to work for the students.
So how about other school districts and other, you said Safe Rides in Westchester?
Uh Safe Routes to School, it's a federal program. And that that promotes non-automotive uh means of getting to school and it's it's all about involvement of. Um the the leadership, both at the student and the parent level.
Okay, well, somewhere somewhere down the road, I'd love to hear more about that whole area because, yes, w- we can go in and. You can do the aggressive bus program, but I I gotta believe that we could learn a lot. A- and some of it bad, you know, where things that don't work. Um you've mentioned one, which is the town of Greenwich, but I don't think the town wants to hear that.
I'm sure they don't, but it's like the, it's the opposite. If you do the opposite of what they did, it'll work better.
That that's that's a, I I know that theory, I know that theory. Let me ask you um. Just a technical question, the um the building on North Maple that you then made a uh preschool or daycare, I can't remember what it is. Um Brunswick has just bought uh a property also. Uh the uh Rosemary Hall and they're they're moving a preschool over there. Uh is there any early indications that they would eliminate uh people driving to the North Maple? Uh facility, or is that too premature?
We have not heard um anything like that, um so.
How many, how many of the students, uh how many of the children at North Maple or Brunswick children as opposed to Greenwich Academy?
I I wanna say about twenty.
Fifteen, more, definitely more heavy GA, um but there could be like fifteen or so.
Just curious, because tha- that's not, a- as Molly just said, that's not known now, but. You, I would assume there might be some reduction in traffic there, but that's a small point. Uh the bigger point I already asked, I'd love to hear more.
And and the other thing I would say is, you know, as part of this, we've we've got, we've got a heat map of where everybody lives. Um and you know, as John said, the convenience factor is key. That's why we're proposing uh smaller shuttles with only, you know, one stop, possibly two. So that it's very convenient for for our students and families.
Last question.
Interested in partnership, sorry.
Last question, which probably has no answer, that intersection at North Maple, North Street, uh that that entire thing there. Is the weirdest intersection in Greenwich. Um I don't suppose. Has traffic studied all that and it's just simply that nothing can be done about it or or what? And and my, and I I apologize for asking it, but I go through that intersection all the time. And um it it's a weird place and you just would hope there'd be something that could be done. Cause that would improve traffic and flow and all the things that you're looking to do.
So just to answer you, Dennis, you've just raised two things that we should talk to DPW about as opposed to the applicant. The first thing is, um wow, um about seventeen years ago.
Seventeen years ago, oh my god.
DPW was active in administering the federal. Um uh Safe Routes to Schools program and we should go back to them now and ask them for a discussion, I think. Patrick, a workshop or something, because with all the different school committees we have going, we should be talking to DPW and find out. I thought the federal monies had dried up, so I'm surprised to hear them say that they're still available. The second thing is, we should talk to them ourselves about the concerns we have. With certain intersections in Greenwich as we see application volume coming into them. And that's the second workshop that we could just talk, Jim Michael is the person we would talk to, so just as an aside, let's just park that idea that we would do that. Go ahead, Dennis, sorry.
No, I've got some other questions, but in the interest of time, I think every.
No, no, ask your questions, this is a great opportunity.
Well, again, at the risk of um. Uh Ms. King, you you mentioned that you have the ability to move some classrooms over to the Rockefeller estate. You mentioned specifically arts and sports, I think you said that. Uh how would that work exactly?
So it was, I'm sorry if I didn't make it clear, so in in looking at um. The Rockefeller property for targeted athletic facilities, so say, building a new squash center. It would allow us to redeploy the squash. it would allow us to redeploy the squash courts on our main campus to classroom spaces and offices. So it was looking at current spaces for the upper school that are already designated for our upper school students, Brunswick and GA. We could redeploy those spaces as we build out targeted facilities at 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 the Rockefeller property. And so our our hope is very much, we want to keep our our community together during the day. But we see that if we can build some of these other buildings on the new on the new property for targeted needs, we can redeploy spaces.
So it wouldn't be like Brunswick putting their lower school up on King Street. You already have that to some extent, right? That's
Yes, we have our pre-K and K on the Ridge View properties. So correct, Dennis. Yep.
And you wouldn't then further split and put the high school over there or something like that? All right. That that's enough. I've I've taken my allotment of time.
No, that's okay, because these are questions that people want. Mary?
Um, I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Okay. We have everybody. Everybody else got a chance, right? So, you know, one thing I would like to see is I would like to receive that description you just made of what the program's gonna be. I would like to have it in writing, because you know how it is with us. People say it, and then it comes in all different, and we're trying to, I'd like to be able to, when you guys come back, I'd like to be able to align the apples you talked about, what it transformed into, what results you got, kind of the thing that Dennis was asking is, you know, what's the program? And just to have the specifics on what you're talking about. Obviously, one of the questions that Aron raised yesterday, and I pushed back on him, but I'm going to say it again today, was for Mr. Kenning to think about, is this issue of when you're using buses, are you gonna slow up traffic at intersections even though you have lower vehicle volume? Because that was a concern Aron raised, and I said, well, Aron, you got 70 kids on a bus, 50 kids on a bus. There's gonna be less traffic. It'll move faster. But his question was if they're stopping, are you creating slower vehicle volume? So that's just a question for, again, Mr. Kenning, you know where we're going. Level of service at the key intersections, how are they going to be impacted with what you're proposing and doing? Okay, those were my key, you know, okay, go ahead, Dennis, another one.
Yeah, I have a bunch of questions, but one that just occurred to me there. Ms. King, are you, did you ever talk to Brunswick about joint busing? Because they they probably do something similar, right? I would guess.
They they do, but they, because of King Street and, you know, that's all of their lower and middle going there. We actually have had Brunswick students we've opened up to on both our Bronx and Bridgeport runs and some of others. So we have opened that up. It's a, it's a, it's a great, great point.
I know that you have a high school there. How, the, your campus there on North Maple is just high school. It begins at ninth grade?
So no, North Maple is grades one through 12. So it's only pre-K and K at the Ridge View campus.
I guess I asked the wrong question. Brunswick starts at ninth grade there. Is that?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. But I would think there'd be high school students there, and Brunswick seems to attract like almost super regional. They have, I don't know their enrollment, but my impression is they have Bronx. They have further field than you might have. They seem to be attracting students from all, but I don't know the numbers, but it would be interesting. Because that would help on the density of the bus route and that kind of thing.
For sure. We've been engaged in those conversations and and have accommodated Brunswick students from those. Bridgeport and Bronx are the furthest afield, and we've accommodated Brunswick students from both of those.
Okay. Sorry, it's 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 an interesting concept. It certainly goes in the direction of helping, hopefully, you're gonna, you're gonna find out whether it's gonna help traffic or not. And the other hand, Nick's right. By having a cap, you you de facto, you couldn't increase traffic unless every single person took two cars or something. But i- if you prove it out, it's an interesting concept that could be done with a lot of other schools. And I don't know about the town, but they they have their own busing issues.
Well, in in knowing that you're thinking about this, one of the things we should probably do, and I started to talk to Patrick about it earlier today, is for us to go back through the record of your applications and gather the issues that were raised that created the cap. Because yes, one was traffic, but was there anything else that was raised? And I I'm just, you know, for example, one of the issues that came up over and over again was the campus that Brunswick just bought. Noise to the adjoining properties was a huge issue. Disruption to the neighbors in the residential neighborhood came up over and over again. So in part, a cap may be given. The reason may be stated it's traffic. But I'm curious, I think we should go back and revisit. Are there ancillary issues that you may want to roll into this plan that addresses all the kinds of concerns that have come up over time as the school expands? As you know, Mr. Haslam knows this, we've addressed a piece of the ongoing issues, sometimes with the public schools, which is the screening between the non-residential use and the residential, and we're looking for people to do that when they do work on their campuses and are reminding people because it helps with the privacy. But I'm curious to go back and revisit, especially when you rebuilt the up, is it the upper school one that you just rebuilt? Right, the upper school.
Lower school.
Lower, lower school and the upper. Then what was the 2001 or so decision?
That was actually, it was around a new upper school in 2001.
Okay, so you did the new upper school, then you did the lower school, and what were the issues that were coming up? Then you did the arts. What are the issues that have come up as recurring themes in addition to traffic that come back to your enrollment? Because we should look at it as a package and be holistic about how do you fit? If you're gonna do this, how would you fit well into the community? And I don't know the answer to that. There may be nothing. There, some of those are before my time. It's always a relief, isn't it, Chip, when something's before our time? All right. Would it, I don't think we've got too many people from the public left who want to speak. We eventually wear people out. But would it be okay if we heard people from the public?
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, so we have Karen Fesuliotis. Ma'am, I'm gonna let you into the meeting. And we're doing two minutes, but she's used to that.
So I'm one of the persistent ones, and I thank you for-
Tell us what all the concerns you have about the academy while you're here besides traffic.
Okay, well, I'm gonna start with the traffic because I'm all for reducing traffic to the campus and fully support a reduction in the flow of traffic and the number of cars to the school. But I'm not in favor of increasing enrollment because I worry about the enforcement of this plan going forward. I don't see that the town or the school really enforces things that they put in place. And and I fear that with more students, we're gonna have more cars and more traffic going forward. A comment was made that traffic was not an issue with the after-school programs, and I can categorically state that that is not true. I travel Maple to Hillside to Ridge U every day because I have my mother here on Ridge U Avenue on the top of Ridge U Avenue. Last night, when I passed Brunswick, I mean, when I passed GA at 6:30, the campus was filled with cars to the point that they were, they were parked on the lawn. And when they come out later that night, it's impossible to get through. I also, you know, think that compared to Brunswick, I'm sorry, Molly, but I don't think that you've been very good neighbors with the with the neighbors. I think that there are issues relating to the flow of traffic. I know that I can go to Brunswick and give license plates of kids who go speeding through my neighborhood on Skylark, and they respond very quickly. I don't know who to contact at your school, and I don't think the neighbors know that. With the recent, for example, graduation and congratulations to all the seniors that graduated, it's a great accomplishment. The streets were were closed. I've asked the first selectman whether there was a vote on the street closure. I didn't hear back from him. Neighbors were told they couldn't get into their own houses on Hillside on a couple of occasions. And they were also told that they shouldn't be doing any gardening. I think that, you know, I obviously you have an outside graduation. The noise from gardening can be, but, you know, again, it's working with neighbors to make sure that there's not that great of an impact on their lives. I, you know, I I appreciate the fact that you are, you need to remain competitive with the surrounding private schools. But I fear that increasing 100 kids to the campus will not be beneficial to the neighborhood overall. We haven't really seen it, and I've grown up in this area. I used to use the school when it was the Brunswick Field, when it was the Brunswick Field. I know this area very well. And I've just seen a deterioration, you know, in in the quality of life. Thank you.
All right, so I think, so when you talk about those issues that weren't addressed, you're really going back to traffic and circulation is, again, really the main concern, right?
That, and also, you know, I I think that people are worried about the noise complaints from, you know, if you increase students. The programming on the campus, because it seems as though they're going later. And so that, you know, there's more utilization of the school, especially with the new art school, and then also you've got, you know, your your athletic programs. And I just, you know, worry about the further, you know, deterioration of quality of life.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Bart Osman. I'll be bringing him in. Why does it always take more than one click? All right. All right, Mr. Osman, or if you would unmute?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Great. Thanks for letting me in. So just to give you, so I'm a neighbor. I live at 171 North Maple, which is directly across from the entrance to the upper school. So it's probably the biggest point of traffic when there is traffic. I have, I have three daughters that graduated from GA. We moved here, actually, we moved to this location about five, six years ago. And, you know, we love being in the neighborhood. We love the fact that GA is across the street. You know, it's great to see the girls coming and going. I think they've been a great neighbor, actually, and I'll I'll give you a couple, couple reasons. One is they are very communicative. I don't know how how broadly the the letters go, Molly, but I get a very nice letter in my mailbox when there's any type of event or anything going on. They've been great in terms of keeping the whole area beautiful, right? That corner of, let's see, Patterson and North Maple looks great now. It's totally open space. You can, you know, go in there and walk around and run your dog around. It's it's looking better than it's ever looked for the neighborhood. They're very conscious of when they use leaf blowers and landscaping and all that, being very conscious of of the neighbors. I think that the the busing program is a no-brainer. I actually, I grew up, I I was a Brunswick grad, class of '86. And before Brunswick, I went to a school up in New Canaan called New Canaan Country School, and everybody was bussed. So I never quite understood why there wasn't more busing. It's the right thing to do, and in this, you know, in this climate environment and ESG focus and everything, I think it's really important that that there's more busing for the environment. So I think I think that's a great thing to do, and for all the other reasons, you know, for the girls and leadership positions and all of that. So I think it's a, I think it's a great thing. I think whether we get the cap or not, we should have busing. And then in terms of the cap, it is important to stay aligned with Brunswick. I think it's really important. I think with the Rockefeller property, with the busing, the traffic will be fine. And with the Rockefeller property and the plans that the board is thinking about in terms of moving the athletics there, I think that the noise issue is gonna go way down, actually. So it's gonna be, you know, you brought that up, that there may be other issues more than just traffic. I think noise and the the whole, you know, traffic of people will go down quite a bit. Because if you have all the squash programs and maybe some fields and all of that going on over in at the Rock property, it should be a much calmer area. So I think all in all, it's, you know, it's great what they're doing. It's great the way they're staging it. And I'm I'm really pleased to see, and I've been involved in the school, my my girls started 22 years ago there, or 23 or something like that. That's all I have to say. I I can't hear you.
The chair is muted.
That would, that would be because I was muted. I'm sorry. I was just telling you your time was up and we tried to enforce it. Thank you very much, Mr. Osman.
Absolutely. Thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak on this application? No other speakers. Okay, there's people listening. Okay, Patrick.
Muted.
Muted too. You just, you did what I did.
I'm just following your leadership, Adam Shear. Letter from the public that would, they'd like to have read in the record. I guess they're not able to attend today, if that's, if you would.
Yes, please go ahead.
Don't mind. Thank you. This is from Nikki and Dan Negrea. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that. Dear members of the Planning and Zoning Board, we are aware of Greenwich Academy GA has a request for the P&amp;Z Board to consider, and we are vehemently opposed to the GA's application to increase its student enrollment. Our house at 3 North Street is located at the intersection of North Street, North Maple, and looks out over Patterson Ave from the west side. Our intersection usually has quite heavy traffic for most of the day, but there are times when it is really very heavy traffic with a buildup of cars in many directions. The traffic coming down North Street starts at 7:15 every school morning. It continues to increase until about 7:50 AM. In the afternoon, it starts building back up again around 2:30 and is much heavier than normal until around 3:30 or 4 o'clock. The sound of car tires, engines, brakes, honking, et cetera, during this time is heavier than in other times. These sounds are not pleasant, and we do not want to have them increase from their already high levels. For traffic, circulation, and noise, the traffic builds and backs up on North Street so that it's hard to enter or exit our driveway in the morning and afternoon. The noise from the heavy car traffic is very loud. The traffic and noise can be heard from inside the house almost every, in every room and with all windows closed and locked. We run air purifiers with fans on all three floors of the house 24 hours a day to help cover the traffic noise and handle indoor air pollution, dust, et cetera, caused by the very heavy traffic. When the drivers nearing the intersection are impatient, there's a lot of honking. This appear, this, excuse me, this happens throughout the day, but especially loud during the school drop-off and pickup time windows. Air pollution. When we're in the yard, quite, there, which is quite a bit, since Nikki Negrea is an avid gardener and keeps a close watch on the plants, the smell from the car fumes and diesel motors is noticeable. It is not a pleasant odor. We often avoid being outside for prolonged periods in the yard when the street traffic is very heavy due to the smell and the noise. We feel very strongly that this is an issue, and we request the close attention of the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Board to deny the request for GA to increase student enrollment. We are grateful for your service to this wonderful town as residents for almost 30 years. We love Greenwich and plan to stay here for decades to come. Thank you very much. Nikki Negrea, Dan Negrea, 3 North Street, Greenwich.
Sounds like no honking program is in order. And that's an easy thing to do. I'm gonna just waste everybody's time. The first selectman of of Darian used to tell a really funny story. They got a lot of people moving in it, but during, I think it was during COVID. And somebody with out-of-state plates was behind her and started honking at her. She put her car into park, and she got out, and she said, "We don't honk in Darian." I just love that story. So it could be, this is the kind of thing that's an easy fix. I think you're you're trying to address the pollution issue. Nick asked you, I'm sorry, Aron asked you about electric vehicles. But this thing about being, it's the parents very often. My experience of seeing parents using facilities around town is that the parents are on a, gotta get this kid here, that kid there, and they're in a hurry and they're under stress, and they become rude. And if, and that program- And if, and that program would help a lot if. The parents were aware that, of the neighborhood, if that you could do that, because honking, yeah, I'd be annoyed too. I don't blame these people. Anything else, you guys? Any other comments? Any other guidance? Any questions you all have for us that? I mean, we're interested. I think you saw what I see here. I'm reading that there's interest. We want to see how it works out. We understand your growth objectives, and yet our mandate is to protect the town, and we're trying to balance that. So all I can give you. So, Mr. Hasland, whole team. Mr. Canning, um, looks to me like you might, you're gonna have to think about vehicle count. As well as intersection LOS. And what the overall vehicle count is as you do the study, but I know you knew that. Okay, Mr. Lowe does have another question.
Well, I mean, it would.
Is that the fickle finger? Sorry.
Yeah, what the whole, yeah.
Yeah, the whole finger.
Would it be appropriate at some point during this?
To come talk to us.
Experimentation, um, period. To have the town, uh, conduct its own traffic study. Uh, commensurate, they don't, we don't do that?
We could. I mean, the school would have, I mean, the thing is, we don't have the funding, so the school would have to pay for it. They would have to reimburse us. And there is a provision in state law that, you know, if we have an application before us, we can. Hire people to study and we get reimbursed, but we don't have the funding. So it's something to discuss. What I was gonna say.
Just thinking, not because I don't trust Mr. Canning or.
No, of course not. We trust everyone.
I'm always, I'm always in, in favor of the second opinion. And particularly when you're dealing with a very.
We can get a second opinion. We are allowed under law to get us.
And parking studies always somehow come out very good, so.
Yes, under, under the law, we can get second opinions. One thing I would, I thought you were gonna say that I loved the, the idea. How about once you roll this out, you let us know how you're doing. Just come in and talk to us, just like we did tonight. And just tell us, oh, everybody hates it. Yeah, hear the issues and see if we can learn a bit. Patrick, did you want to add something?
I just wanted to add that we, we have a traffic consultant that works for the, the commission, and, and they review independently. The studies that are provided.
He wants a whole study.
No, no, I, I, no, that, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah, but. You can ask them, but you see it all the time. Every time, Mr., you know, we always have beta mixed comments on the studies.
Right, but what's gonna happen, what might happen here is this program may be launched. And it's gonna go for a full year, and I think it would be interesting. At, at a couple of points during that period. To get quote independent or a second opinion, however you want to describe.
Yep, yeah, I would like you guys to come in and talk.
Waiting for the end and having that go on.
No, definitely come in and talk. So give us a description of the entire thing you're gonna do. Come in and talk midstream. Once you're rolling. Come in and talk to us and say, well, it's working great. Um, we want to tweak it. Just tell us what's going on, so we are starting to prepare mentally for where you might go. That'd be great.
Madam Chair, if I made application, or I can, I am. Uh, continuation of this pre-app. Um, and has to be in the agenda in September, um, so that, um. You've got that lapse in August and whatnot, so that we know we're coming back near the end of September to talk to you again. Let's see what the date is for that.
It doesn't matter. You can come in in September. You can come in in October. You can come in and, you know, you can do as many pre-apps as you want. You can come in anytime. The whole idea was to get people comfortable. Before an application is filed. So come in as much as you want. We want to hear about it.
No, I'd like to, like, make that request, though, um, prior to your taking the summer break, um, the August break, so that we can be on the agenda in September. That's what I'm suggesting.
We hardly take a break at all. I mean, come on, we could be on the RTM here with a whole summer off. Um, okay, so. Patrick keeps promising that the agenda is gonna be lighter in a few months.
That's not true, Madam Chair. It's not true.
All right, okay, so we'll, I'll ask Patrick right now to see if he can accommodate you for September. And then maybe for a few months after that. So halfway through your school year, you would come back in and just talk.
Well, we might be actually filing an application at some point just to get in the basket, but. For the moment, let's just say we'll see you in the second meeting in September and we'll work with.
Okay.
After you just see that happen.
All right, okay. It's a deal. Nice seeing everybody. Thank you.
It's been very, very valuable.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Congratulations, Ms. King.
Oh, and Ms. King, you're supposed to think of something totally different to do in your next life. That was the assignment.
Boston. I'm gonna hang out with my four grandchildren. It's, it's, it's going to be different, so.
Okay, it doesn't sound different. It's children, it's educating children, it's the same.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye. So we all think we're gonna do something different and we're just doing. The same thing.
I'm trying. I'm trying.
All right, okay, I think we got everybody out. Okay, folks, now, we only have. Summit Avenue LLC. And that's it. We only have one, right?
Next minutes.
Wait, wait.
Next minute. Okay, wait, 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 hold on a second. Okay, that was a thing. What about the subdivision?
Three twenty, three twenty-eight Palmer, I'm sorry. Yeah, so you choose, Nick, which one you want to go with?
Okay, then two eighty, and then two eighty. What I, okay, you're gonna do the minutes, because I'm not supposed to, and.
No, somebody else can do them. I did them last time.
I thought they were called next.
They are. We'll make a motion to approve next minutes. They are next minutes.
Okay, three twenty, Palmer Hill Road, final subdivision PLPZ twenty twenty-three zero three eight. Applicants request the final subdivision of existing, uh, thirty-nine thousand three hundred ten square foot lot of two parcels. The first would contain twenty-three thousand eight hundred fifteen and second, uh, fourteen thousand five hundred. And an open space of nine forty-seven. In the LBR and LBR one in our twelve zones per sections, uh, six fifty-eight. Uh, the subdivision regulations and six two oh five of the building zone regulations. The commission finds that preliminary subdivision PLPZ twenty twenty-two, uh, four five five was moved to final in November. Twenty twenty-two. And the applicant meets the standards of sections, uh, subdivision sections and, uh, BZR. Um, now. I would put this out, but, uh, we can have a larger discussion of this. That is, uh, for section two sixty-one six, the application is a re-subdivision. Well, let me get through the whole thing so we can get, um. Go through that. The applicant received a variance of required paveway. With an, um, accessway from the, uh, ZVA on eleven twenty-eight under PLPZ twenty twenty-two sixty-two. Conservation issue comments dated to, uh, three twenty-eight. Indicating recommendations to the proposal. Zoning issue comments, uh, dated, uh, three seven twenty-three indicating proposal meets the requirements of the VZR. DPW issue comments dated, uh, five twenty-three indicating approval for subdivision. Sewer division issued comments on, uh, three twenty-nine requesting applicants to send a letter of acknowledging. A seat of, uh, receipt of P and Z comments. And issues to address, uh, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit and wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire. Dated eleven nine twenty-two indicating no permit required. Uh, therefore, pursuant division comment the applicant has submitted an acknowledgement. Uh, letter dated, uh, ten twenty-five, and the applicant should refer a record sheet in the form of a suitable. Suitable for the chairman of the planning and zoning commission to sign. And file with the Greenwich Land Records, and the applicant should to address any outstanding staff or interdepartmental issues.
Okay, did we make it clear enough? That we want a full-on restoration. Of the existing open space. And the proposed new open space, and that staff is to sign off on that, reviewed by P and Z staff. With the consultation of conservation if they deem fit. Is that clear? Did you feel like you said it's strong enough?
I think we did, yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure because. You know, we got this advertisement. Is there anything else that you guys have remaining? Oh, the trees, did you do the trees?
Is it a one-to-one replacement?
I think we should ask for a one-to-one. I think given how tight that lot is, Nick, I have trouble seeing that they could do a two-for-one. But that, let's ask for one-for-one and that they do deciduous, that they do some deciduous.
Okay, because I.
Go ahead.
You know, the, the size of these, I mean, you and I have talked about this, the size of these. These replacement trees. By a, a, a number of necessities, um, are, are very small. So the notion of trying to be concerned at this point. Uh, maybe twenty, thirty, forty years from now, something else, but that there, there's not enough space for a two-for-one. I don't know. It seems kind of, um. At best arbitrary.
Um.
I mean, I, I would, I would ask for more rather than, you know.
Why don't we say that the, um, and that the applicant. Do as many, as many tree replaces many, attempt to replace, replace two, um, with the, with the understanding that. You know, one is acceptable. And we'll try to look at how that says in the decision letter. And if they do mixes, they can get some ornamentals in, they can get. Some deciduous in, and we don't just have the line of evergreens they're replacing because the, the environmental value of the evergreens is less. And that's what we're going for here. So, okay.
Speaking, speaking of trees. Um. The. Open space. At the foot of the, uh, street there, that triangle. And the adjacent, um. Accessway, that's where that Japanese maple is.
Which is totally on their property, right?
It's on their property. And they're gonna have to cut it down or do something because they've got other utilities going underneath it.
Tree protection and that they use it.
Are you, did you find that on a map, Nick? Because I, I was looking.
Yeah, I did. I did a cross-reference between the map. It had the utilities on it. The stone wall and a street view, and the street view basically showed the. The, um. Tree in a position where it was clearly inside the accessway.
Okay. I, I would just remind the commission that the subdivision regulations require two trees to remain. In the front of the lot, so. Uh, this one presumably is protected by that. So if you, if you want to use that, they can either reroute or we can replace it and, and.
Okay, but let, let's start out with saying that we want tree protection for the Japanese maple, for the red Japanese maple. And that we want, um, an air, what's it called? Airho? No.
Air spade.
An air spade used. Um, when work is done in proximity of the roots and that we want its protection. Should the tree fail to survive, it should be replaced. To meet the requirements of the subdivision regulation at the front of the lot.
Yep. Perfect.
And by the way, that table with, is, is that ta, oh, that table still in? Because it's in the subdivision regs.
It's, uh, it's language, but yes, it's there. They didn't get a change with the, uh.
Patrick, after just as a, okay, let me finish and then I'll say this. Okay, do I, do anybody else want to make sure that this is a good subdivision? Anything else? Okay, do I have a second? And again, you know who's seated is?
Um, are we good with the, uh, um. Application is a re-subdivision?
Yeah, I think it's a re-sub. Isn't it a re-sub, Patrick?
I, it, it is, it is a division of lots approved under a prior decision, so.
Yeah, so a re-sub. Yeah, I mean, that's why it's in the public hearing. That's your first tip-off. If you're ever in doubt of what it is, look at where it is in the, in the hearing. Because the re-sub is required in a public hearing. Okay, do I have a second? Okay, again, seated is Albin, McRae, Jenkins, Yeski and Lo. Do I have a second? Oh, thank you. Jenkins has second, seconded. Madam Jenkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Yeski?
Aye.
Lo?
Aye.
McRae?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five nothing, and we go to. Summit Avenue Railroad LLC two eighty. Before you start that, Patrick, just as a comment, after the ARC meeting, I went back. And read fresh the landscape regulations. I do think we need to make them more specific. I think we came back too much on them, and we're gonna have to look at them as we go over time. And get a little more specific, because if I read them, I would not be clear exactly what I was, how much I was expected to plan.
I, I don't, I don't disagree, however, um.
I know, we negotiated it, so we need to see how it goes. Right?
Listen, nothing is perfect and we can always make improvements as.
I mean, we took two years and everybody pushed back and we did what we did. And now I'm like, wow, I wish we had been more specific. Okeydoke, Nick, go ahead.
The difference in zones, uh, creates issues, right?
I mean, yeah.
Yep. That's one, that's one issue, right?
Okay, ready? Here we go. Uh, two eighty Railroad Avenue, PLPZ two twenty-three. One four six final coastal site plan special permit, I've been seeking approval to make exterior. And interior renovations to the existing office retail, uh. Buildings increasing the gross floor area of the second floor of two eighty Railroad Avenue. By two hundred four square feet. The existing building seats, uh, forty, uh, forty thousand cubic feet on a one point oh nine parcel. Where the total volume of all structures would exceed a hundred fifty thousand cubic feet. The property is located in the GB CGIO and COZ zones. Uh, per section six one eleven of the BZR and sections twenty-two A ninety and twenty-two A ninety-six of the Connecticut general statutes. The commission finds that, uh, as required, where, that is required, the property came before the commission as a pre-application. At the three seven twenty-three meeting under PLPZ twenty twenty-three twenty-six. Per section six one fifty-eight B, the site plan, uh, parking requirements can be modified. And although the site requires a hundred and fifty parking spaces. It has been determined that the existing one hundred and forty-nine spaces are underutilized. Uh, ARC issued comments on one four twenty-three indicating electronic return for review with comments. Zoning issued comments. On five seventeen twenty-three indicating the proposal meets the requirements of the BZR endorsed the project for zoning permit sign-off. Sewer issued comments on five seventeen twenty-three requesting the applicant submit. A signed letter acknowledging receipt of their P and Z comments. Uh, engineering, uh, the applicant submitted a drainage exemption dated four twelve. Conservation issued comments on five two endorsing the proposal. Wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire on twelve seven twenty-two indicating no action required. And EMAC issued comments dated. We don't have anything on that, so. Just kind of tossing that out. Uh, therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following, applicant shall request that employees of the site utilize the underground garage. The applicant shall provide appropriate signage to direct drivers to the underground garage. Uh, pursuant division comments, the applicant has submitted an acknowledgement letter dated five nineteen twenty-three. Prior to zoning permit, uh, the applicant shall submit electronically to ARC a fully developed signage program. Including lighting and sections showing placeholder for signage on each building. ARC members to review. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Jenkins has seconded. Ms. Jenkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Yeski?
Aye.
Mr. Lo?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five nothing, and we go to the approval of next minutes. I hereby move the approval of next minutes dated November ninth, twenty twenty-one, November twenty-third, December seventh, December twenty-first, all of twenty twenty-one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Jenkins, oh.
Yes.
Just a question. Jenkins was not on the commission at the time. It's all right if she seconds?
I, I would, I would recommend not voting on this, Madam Chair, or not, not, not having Ms. Jenkins vote on this, just.
Okeydoke. All right.
So young, she wasn't even around at this.
So Yeski? Were you second?
I'll second.
All righty, Mr. Yeski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Lo?
Aye.
And Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes. Four nothing, and we're gonna have to remember that the next time, because I had forgotten all about that.
Is it my vote, Madam Chair? No, unfortunately, you're considered a leper, you know, this is what the state, you're. So one of us dies or passes on. It's a horrible thing.
You're terribly disfigured, so you can't vote, that's.
You guys, or it's like, it's like Patrick going, well, I'm not a voting member, but I really need a break. All right, okay, Dennis, sorry, but you know, you got to.
I'm glad Mr. Barilak isn't here to really object.
All right, but, okay, so we don't see each other again for a while, right? No executive sessions?
No.
All right, um.
So I figured what, I figured out what I wanted to do for my next life. I just want to disappear.
Don't say that. Be careful.
Yeah, see, and I can't, okay, all right, you guys. Everybody have fun at school committee minions. Bye. Thank you.
Got off before you were able to say that.